And for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, welcome everybody to this planning board meeting on Valentine's Day. Thank you all for joining us. We will start with approval of the minutes from our January 10th meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Tom, second by Cassie, and we'll do a quick roll call. So Tom?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Cassie?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, that one down. Disclosure of conflict of interest, does anybody have a conflict with any of the votes that they're going to take tonight?
I always disclose, I'm sorry, I always disclose that my husband works for Colby College, but I do not, and I don't have a conflict, but if anybody on the planning board sees that there's a conflict, I'm happy to recuse myself.
Anybody on the planning board have a problem with Hillary participating in the?
Nope.
Vote on the Colby parking lot? Okay, moving forward. Number three, let me just share my screen here. All right. What? Oh.
Yeah.
Yes. Sorry, Randy. Um, Capital C thirty-seven, Capital LLC is requesting informal pre-application preliminary plan review for the construction of Phase Two of the Expansion of Countryside Mobile Home Park. This review is in accordance with Articles Four and Eight of the Site Plan Review Subdivision Ordinance. All right, Randy?
Good evening, I'm Randy Butler with Dirigo Engineering, and we're here to take a look at Phase Two of the Countryside Mobile Home Park Expansion. Phase One is currently under construction. Both of these sites are down off the West River Road. You have a series of mobile home parks, there's Punky Meadows on the south end, then Countryside Mobile Home Park, and then Village Green, all owned by the same company. C thirty-seven Capital Waterville LLC is the owner. The current construction on Phase One is sixty lots. They're hoping to have about thirty of those available for leasing in May, so they're on target for that. This phase will take place kind of further out back, kind of more directly behind the existing Countryside Mobile Home Park, and it will connect to Phase One. It'll connect to Phase One, but the primary connectors, at least we anticipate, most of the traffic will actually be off from Punky Meadows through Punky Lane, that mobile home park, which again, the owner does own that facility. There are seventy lots proposed right now. That might vary a little bit by a few lots perhaps as we get going through the process more, but we're currently standing at seventy. This will require an amendment to the site law permit that we received for Phase One, so that's part of our goal is to, we'll meet tonight, get your feedback, and then it probably will be a few months before we return. There's a lot of work to be done between what you see right now and the final product that we'll have to submit to Maine DEP in a few months. Our goal is to submit sometime probably June, give or take, to DEP, and I expect we'll be back to meet with you at some point, maybe just prior to submitting to them, to see if you have other concerns. Utilities are all connected to the public system, public water, public sewer connections and so forth, so we're in good shape on those. That kind of hits the highlights. If you have any questions, oh, just so you can see on the map here, just for clarification, the roads that are shown in black, because this is West River Road over here, and the other Punky Lane down on the southern end, and then Countryside Mobile Home Park. This portion here is Countryside Phase One, which is currently under construction, so for the color coding on this is, everything in black is either already constructed or under construction, and the roads that are shown in red are proposed roads, so that's the layout. So again, we'll have a connection here to Countryside Phase One, and then we'll have two separate connections to Punky Lane. There's just a small segment up here in Phase One that we're completing. We had some last minute issues when we did that. We kind of found out last minute, there was an easement that forced us to revise that, so we decided to lock that off when we did Phase One, so we'll bring that back into play there. So that total count that we've got is seventy units at the current time. Most of them will be double wides. I think I've counted eleven or twelve that we're projecting to be single wides right now, but that's the goal for both Punky Meadows Phase, well, most of Punky, the back half of Punky Meadows that was completed last year was primarily double wides. Phase One of Countryside is primarily double wides. Again, there might be a smattering of single wides in there, but the market has trended towards double wides, so that's what the owner is targeting.
Okay, um, Randy, what is the plan for garbage removal?
The garbage removal, garbage removal as it is currently is curbside.
When you say curbside, do you mean of the people's lots, or?
Yes, correct, yes. Yeah, it'll be Gregory's disposal is who they've got currently contracted to do this. Correct, right, not city.
And can you maybe talk to me a little bit about the wetlands? I mean, there's a lot of streams down there. We've heard from people that live in the existing part of the lot that it's very swampy, you know, we've seen the roads get washed out, et cetera, et cetera, over the course of the years, so.
I'm not sure what you're talking about as far as roads washing.
Well, I remember there being a sinkhole in a road like three years ago.
Okay, well, most.
For Bruce to lay in, so.
Yeah, there've been major improvements over the last few years. When Rick Breton bought, I think maybe some of your concerns were in, well, I guess I'm not sure which part the concerns were.
I'm just wondering, it's gonna be, it's probably fairly wet there, right?
Uh, well, that's not a fair assessment. It's basically, yes, there are streams that come through the site, but it's a lot there from the, essentially you have a hill or ridges, and then the streams are down low. We do have three stream crossings, but the ground that we're building on is dry, perfectly dry, perfectly suitable for a building.
All year round?
Oh, yes, yeah. We can't build in a wetland. There are a few minimal wetland areas that were disturbing, and that will all have to be permitted through Maine DEP. Some of this site used to be a campground years ago, back in the seventies was a campground, so yes, there are a couple of wet spots, but we're not, we're not building in those, we're avoiding those, some of those spots. Actually, if you can look at the next page, I believe I show the wet areas on the next page, if you can advance that, please. Okay.
This one?
Yeah. Yes, yep, this is kind of a block, a little closer view, and as you can see, there are some wetlands up here, we're not building in them, we're avoiding them. There's wetlands here that we're avoiding. There are some wetlands that don't show up quite so, at the stream crossings, there are wetlands, we'll have to get across those streams. But generally speaking, this layout is more closely resembles Punky Meadows. If you've been through Punky Meadows, you'll remember you kind of go through a couple of streams, and then there's a couple of deep gullies. That's more what the terrain is here. Not so much like Phase One where it was flatter and had the swales going through it. These are very well-defined ridges, if you will.
Yeah, I also remember residents in the past complaining that their slabs like were breaking or things like that because they thought that the ground underneath was too wet. I'm not an engineer, I assume not everybody that lives there is, but can we make sure, how can we make sure that those types of problems aren't going to exist?
I think, I don't know for sure, but I know some of those complaints were in Village Green, which were constructed primarily in the eighties, and it all has to do with construction practices. If somebody doesn't get the slab up high enough, doesn't get it elevated at the right elevation and so forth, that's what matters. That's what makes a difference. That's why we, that's why we specify on the plans what those grades should be at. So everything that is done is set up higher to drain away from the buildings and so forth. I suspect some of those sites that had the problems, they just weren't built up enough. You know, they should have gravel under them, they should have six-inch slab, should have reinforcing. If they weren't constructed that way, they're going to have problems.
Okay, and I'm just gonna pull back to the, what about a turnaround here at where my cursor is here for the fire?
Yeah, it doesn't show up, unfortunately, I didn't get that. It's, if you look closely at that page, you'll see the turnaround is there, I just didn't get it highlighted, didn't get it filled in and read.
In between those two blocks there?
Yes, that's correct, correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Randy?
And one of the owners is here as well, if you desire to speak with him directly.
Okay.
Randy, what are the elevation changes where the streams exist? They look like they're like fifteen to twenty feet that you're going to have to be covering, going over with the culvert?
That's correct, yes, yep.
How do you propose going over them? Do those require Army Corps of Engineers to?
Yes, they'll require a permit through Army Corps of Engineers, that's correct. We sized the streams, they're generally four to five, six feet bankful width, that's kind of what you use for a measurement, and then you've got to be twenty percent larger than that. So we expect there'll be probably, hopefully a couple of them can be done with, say, for example, an eight-foot diameter culvert. We haven't got them sized yet, but they will be either eight-foot or so culvert, maybe a little larger, or else a small box culvert that we'll span those with.
Do you know what the elevation change is between the riverbed and the?
And the top of the bank, or the ridge?
Yeah.
They are, you're right, they're somewhere around fifteen feet, it varies a little bit. One of them, the one up here isn't all that much. This one's relatively shallow, it's probably like a eight, ten-foot drop to the stream there. That one's relatively shallow. This is the deeper one here, and that's probably something on the order of fifteen, twenty feet from the, that's from the ridge grade down the brook and then back up. At least similar, if you've been in the Punky Lane, the one gully that's deep, that's that same stream, and you would expect a similar type of construction there with guardrails, et cetera. And then this stream, well, it doesn't show up on this page, but where you asked about the turnaround, that stream there is probably just seven or eight feet below the prevailing grades around it. That one's not as deep there either.
Are the proposed roads and bridges wide enough to accept, you know, emergency vehicles going in both directions?
Yes, one of the things that we're looking into doing, I met with the fire, the deputy chief and code enforcement officers about maybe a month or so ago, and had a discussion. We were, if you could, yeah, we can stay here.
Okay.
One of the concerns was as far as the total network of roads, we didn't want to have too long of a dead end created, and we knew that we'd have to have this connector here. We were hoping that maybe we could do something for a compromise on this connector, because every crossing we have, there, there's environmental impacts, and then there's cost to those as well, so we're trying to mitigate both of those if we can. The issue with that, trying to eliminate this one, you would have had, from this point here, or from Punky Lane, you would have had about, I believe it was sixty units or so on a dead end run. So if there was something for an accident, something tying up the road, you've got those sixty units that don't have access, egress, to get out. So, so we had, we spoke with, the fire department said, well, essentially they were willing to scale back, they still want to see a crossing at that Road C, but they're willing to scale back the requirements. For example, city ordinance requires that street grades be no steeper than eight percent. They're willing to allow us to go a little bit steeper there. Essentially, the discussion started out being, we can use this just for emergency access only, and I kind of said, well, if we've got a road there, people are going to use it, so we might as well make it. I would like to consider, it may not, it's probably not going to pan out, but I would like to consider making that maybe one lane through that portion, if it can be emergency access, generally speaking. People are going to cut across there. It'd be similar to a camp road, for example, a little lesser quality, but most camp roads I know, people can bypass each other with a little caution.
That proposed one way or one lane, that would go from where to where on the?
It would be right here at this Road C. It might be better if you can back up to the previous screen, it stands out a little bolder on screen, think with the black ones. It'd be in this area here, at this spot right here.
And that would connect to Punky Lane, or?
Yes, well, each side does connect to Punky Lane, yeah, so what we are hoping might work out is just to eliminate this road altogether, but again, it would leave about sixty vehicles, sixty homes on a dead end road. The town, the city's ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, in, I think it's twenty, twenty-two or something like that, it's a relatively small number. Yeah, right, in a thousand feet, there's a maximum dead end length that they'll allow.
On the slide, can you point to where the sixty units, the ones that you're counting, is it?
Yeah, it'd be from this point on, so in other words, suppose, suppose there's an accident at this point from here, or something happens right here. You've got, if you didn't have that road, you had everybody from here on out. So you have the west end of Punky, Punky Meadows Mobile Home Park, and then you have this portion here would be cut off.
And I counted roughly ten to fifteen, I believe they're undersoil filters to catch the runoff?
Yes, yes, something like that, yes, and that will vary as we get into this a little more, those are very preliminary, but yeah.
And those would all drain into the streams, is that?
Yes, that's correct, yeah, but not, you know, they won't have direct connection to the stream for as much as possible. We're trying to maintain seventy-five foot setback from the streams. DEP will allow us to get a little bit closer if we need to, just to get daylight to drain these underdrying soil filters, but that's the intent.
It's not highlighted well on that slide, but I see there are two ponds up by the northwest corner.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe this, that pond there perhaps?
Do those, those, high volume, are they spring fed or under fed?
No, they're fed by an intermittent stream. Essentially, I believe this is Mr. Green's property, and I'm not sure if it was his work or a predecessor, essentially built a dam across there at some point, way back, years ago. I'm not sure how long, but you can see that it's twenty, thirty-plus years that that dam has been constructed to create that pond, and it has a culvert outlet that feeds the rest of the stream.
Do we need to be concerned with flooding or any potential washouts with a heavy rainfall or seasonal flooding, is that?
No, no, as far as the new crossings, do we need to be concerned about it with that structure? I don't know, I mean, we haven't done an analysis on it, it's not on our property, if anything happens to that. You know, there could be some potential flooding, but that's out of our jurisdiction.
I haven't been out there, I haven't seen how much water flows through those streams, but since the culvert is fairly deep, it stands to reason that there's significant water flow?
Yeah, it's, like I said, that stream there varies, the six, seven feet wide, maybe, maybe eight, a little bit more in some areas. That one has, we've got a, this existing culvert that it flows through down here, sorry, over here, the existing culvert there is an eight-foot diameter culvert.
Okay.
And which is, essentially Army Corps makes you size those significantly larger than what the flow, the very, I would say, I would venture to guess that that has never flowed full or even, perhaps even half full.
After the water passes through that eight-foot culvert, does that travel across the hearts to the south?
Yes, correct.
And then down to the Kennebec?
Correct, yes.
Are these dirt roads, Randy?
No, they'll be paved. The only one that, the only one that we would consider making dirt is this one that we're considering for emergency access, that Road C where it crosses.
Yeah.
At this location, the. It sounds like the city engineer and code enforcement and fire chief would be willing for that to be dirt.
I can understand what you're saying about that being an emergency, but I also see what you're saying, people will drive on that, right?
Right, people will use it.
We're talking, there's a, there's a lot of homes in there, right?
Sure, right.
Like kind of shoehorned in there, so if you, if people are cutting across through there and that's dirt, I mean, that could be of concern.
Yes and no, there are roads all over.
Well, it concerns me, how that.
Yeah, yeah, there.
So when we're talking like a camp road, you know?
Right, that's, that's kind of, that's what you.
Camp roads aren't seeing that many trips every day.
Yes, that's a fair statement.
So that's a concern of mine, I guess.
Sure, yeah, and this isn't a strong demand for us, I mean, it's a, it's a consideration, I guess, but it's not a, it's not a must.
Something to think about before you come back.
Sure.
Um, okay, I have a question, Randy. The city officials in December received a letter of concern from a citizen who lives in Countryside about rats. She had said she caught twelve rats in basically twenty-four hours in her home, and she had attempted to contact owners of the park, I believe, multiple times. She herself called Modern Pest Services and Terminex, both parties said that it was the park owner's responsibility to deal with this, that the pest control companies could bait the trailer, but it wouldn't eliminate the problem because it was a park issue. Have you heard about anything like this? Do you know any?
I heard of it. I received the first round of emails and sent information to the owners, or for the city to contact the owners. I don't know what has happened since then. I don't know if, Mark, do you have any information regarding that?
Yeah, we have that.
You have to go up to one of the microphones because we have people online.
Yeah, come up and join me, Mark.
Hey, Mark, I, yes, we did receive the inquiry around the same time in December, and we contacted Modern Pest as well, explored different kind of extermination services and traps, and so we've employed those. I think so far we've seemed to have reasonable success. We haven't heard any subsequent complaints, but, you know, we're still monitoring, it seems like.
It's winter, too.
Yeah, winter between just migration patterns, as well as, I think a lot, some of the trees removed there might have disturbed where some of these rodents might have lived before, so, you know, we're aware of the issue and doing the best we can trying to remedy this at that point.
So, yeah, the ordinance is very clear when it comes to breeding grounds for rodents, pests, et cetera. So I think it would be important before you come back to identify maybe the source of that. If disturbing those trees in the first expansion has caused a lot of pests to, you know, come forth and breed, what is the second phase going to cause?
Right, it looks, like her house was destroyed, like the floor was destroyed, appliances were destroyed, walls were destroyed, dishwasher destroyed, all of her food was destroyed. I mean, it's not, it's not, it's a burden, it seems like quite the burden. If what she's reporting is happening to anybody else, that's a pretty big burden to place on residents, and if, I mean, I assume there will be more removal of foliage and trees and stuff in this expansion, right?
Right, yes.
So, yeah, I think what Sam said, like figuring out what, how you'll mitigate that issue is pretty important. That's a lot of homes, and it's a public, that's like a public health issue, for sure.
Yep, we will look into it, and hopefully by that time, like I say, it'll be a few months before we come back, so hopefully we'll see some improvement.
Okay, cool.
In the meantime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the planning board for Bruce?
Thank you, and I think Randy just maybe answered my first question. Roughly, you think you'll be back when? Three months, you said?
I don't have an exact, but yeah, it'll be two to three months before we come back. Our goal is to try to submit to DEP sometime in June, and I'd like to come back before then, not necessarily for final. I am expecting probably a couple more meetings because there's a lot here to iron out, so I'd expect at least two more meetings, but I'd like to come back next time with like a ninety-five percent plan that we can present, and at least feel like the board is kind of in agreement for the most part. We might have a few, few items to iron out after that point, but we kind of want to be at roughly the ninety-five percent point before we submit to DEP.
Thank you, and I have two more questions, I think, Samantha.
Yeah, go ahead.
So one is just, the, for the public, Samantha, could you clarify what our, what happens tonight? No vote, correct? We're just doing informal and preliminary plan review.
Yeah.
So just for the public, so they understand clearly.
Yeah, there is no vote, and Randy will have to go through other permitting and licensing, and come back, and you'll see in the next thing when we go through, what do you call that checklist, Dan?
The findings.
Findings and facts form.
Okay, and then my, let's see, what was my, I had one other question. Oh, were there any, this might be for Ann, were there any notifications sent out prior to this meeting, or is that only next meeting?
Randy did send out letters to abutters.
And I think it's in the preliminary site plan packet, you can see the abutters, and I'm going to give those, the abutters that are here an opportunity to speak as soon as the planning board's done.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I figured, I just wanted to see. So they won't, they won't, there will be no other notifications that will? won't, there will be no other notifications that will need to be sent out prior to the next, when they come back?
No, he'll have to notify again, or I will, either one, for the next meeting, because we can't postpone to a date certain at this point. We don't know when he's going to come back.
Okay, great. That's wonderful. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Hillary?
Thanks. I just want to sort of follow up because some of the discussion was off microphone. Can you remind me, the, you were talking about the possibility of a one-way road. How many units would that lead to?
Well, it would not be an isolated road. There would be about 30 units beyond that one-way road, but that would not be the primary way that they would get there. They would have, the primary access would be through Punky Meadows.
Right. Okay, okay, okay. I would say, I, if there's a discussion about whether it should be concrete or dirt, I'd probably agree with our chair on paving it. I think I'd be concerned about it being dirt. And the full access, I guess the full access through Punky Meadows, that's what is in black, then leading to the red. And that's, that's still sort of one, if I'm looking at it correctly, that's still sort of one main road that would lead to all of these units, right? That would be two-way traffic.
That's correct. But there is also the other connector on the north side tying into Countryside Mobile Home Park Phase One. So part of what we accomplish here, currently Punky Meadows, Punky Meadows Mobile Home Park is a dead end, just a single in-and-out dead-end road serving about 50, 49 to 50 units. So this will actually improve that situation by tying another road around to the north to tie into Countryside Phase Two, Phase One, sorry.
Right, but that, that axis would be the one-way road that you're talking about. Is that correct?
No, no, that would, well, one portion of it would be one-way, but the first, if you're looking at the plan, the first ridge, kind of more in the center of the plan, that road, yes, that road there, that would be, that would be all served from two-lane roads. It's just that connector that serves the lots off to the west, you know, the lower left.
I see, okay.
Yeah, that, that's the connector in that area that we've considered making one lane.
Right, okay. And then I wanted to follow up maybe with a, it might be more for Tom. Tom, you had asked a question just about, I don't know, something emptying into the rivers. Can you repeat what your question was?
Well, due to the fact that there's such an elevation change, there's going to be a potentially significant amount of runoff, particularly seasonal runoff with snow or heavy storms. And typically with this project, we've seen undersoil filters to catch that runoff, and it slowly diffuses it. And my question was, where do those undersoil filters empty? And essentially, they're, I believe they're gravity drained, and they would drain into the streams, which will travel through the eight-foot culverts that are being proposed, and then down through under Punky Lane, and then through the Harts' property down to the Kennebec River? So that's where I was getting, I just had to manage that amount of runoff. Since the ravines are so deep, it would seem to imply that there'd be a significant amount of water traveling through those streams. And I believe they were six to seven feet in width. So that's my concern.
Right. If I can clarify briefly, everything you said was accurate. The one thing to add to that is that DEP and the City of Waterville's ordinances is that pre-development flows that we meet, basically the post-development flows cannot be any greater than the pre-development flows. So that's, that's the target. That's part of what these underdrained soil filters help us with. So they're not only attracting the water, trying to remove pollutants, but they're also providing detention. So that theoretically, if everything's done properly, the flows that we see in those streams after the project is done will be no greater than the flows we see before the project.
The existing property is essentially wooded or densely vegetated?
Correct. A portion of it has been cleared. When they cleared Phase One, we thought it was prudent while they had the logging gear there to clear. I would guess probably three-quarters of Phase Two has been cleared already.
Can you show us on the slide where it's already been cleared?
Well, it would be the biggest part of where you see buildings, the largest part of that. There might be a little bit of the portion off to the north.
Like here?
Yes, yes, exactly.
This has all been cleared?
Between, it hasn't been cleared near the streams. If you see where the heavy red lines are around the streams, those are 75-foot setbacks, and they've pretty, I would guess that they've, I haven't measured it, but I think that they've maintained that for the streams as well. The area that they have not cleared much of, they haven't cleared this area here, they haven't cleared this area in here, but the biggest part of this area through here has been cleared, and the biggest part of the develop, the area that they're going to develop through, off to the west, has been cleared.
So, just so that you guys can hear online, he said this whole part here has been cleared, and this whole part here has been cleared.
Yeah, I'd say roughly two-thirds to three-quarters of it has been cleared.
Has anything been done to mitigate stormwater runoff, particularly soil, like just barriers to keep that from going into the river?
No.
Stream? No?
No.
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm, I mean, I don't know that I want to speak for you, Tom, but I'm kind of getting it in my head. Like, when you have a lot of vegetation, like that vegetation helps to prevent runoff, right? And when you remove all of that vegetation, I mean, it just, it ceases to exist, and then you're going to have a lot more. So I'm not, I'm not sure, Tom, if that's what you were getting at, but I think that's definitely what I'm thinking about.
We're on the same page, Hillary.
Thanks.
All right, Matt?
Hey, I had just one other question on the one-way emergency road. It looks like there's potentially four, maybe five pads that would be off of that road, or up to those, would those be accessed by a two-way street as well?
Yeah, the plan would be where we have mobile homes, I see where you're talking about coming off from Road D. Yes, we're planning on having two lanes wherever there are homes.
Okay, right up about until that point of the last two there?
Right, right. So we're really only thinking about narrowing it down, just, you know, primarily at the stream crossing itself, just to have less impact on the stream, so that instead of a, you know, 60 or 70-foot culvert, maybe we can get by with a 30 or 40-foot culvert. That's kind of part of our goal in, in trying to get that.
Sure. And let's say that you did go with the one-way in-between there. Would it be safe to assume that since there's only a few mobile homes that would be accessed from the main road, that that would probably cut down on quite a bit of traffic, and especially if there was a sign that said residence only on that section, something like that?
Yeah, potentially, yeah. Again, as we first started out thinking this may be just emergency access, but then said, well, you know, if somebody wants to cut from one side of the park across the other to visit their neighbor, for example, they're certainly going to go through there. We don't want to have to put a gate up or anything of that nature. It would be unnecessary and unwarranted.
If it's there, they'll use it, right?
Exactly.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any members of the public? Go for it.
Do you want to bring up the other slide?
I can.
I'm Jack Green, and I butt this expansion thing.
You got to speak into the mic, please.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm Jack Green, and I butt.
I'm here.
You're here, okay.
Is the expansion all on countryside land, or is some of it on Punky also?
There's no expansion on Punky at all.
So everything right there is on countryside's land?
That's correct.
Phase Two.
Yes.
All right. Secondly, my water supply comes from countryside. I don't know if you're aware of that. So during your construction, we need to make sure that you don't damage my water line. And I believe it comes through the campground, previous, the old campground.
Through that campground road?
Yeah. I don't know if it's on the road or where it goes, but it's from the end of the countryside, and it goes to my house. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Any other comments? Absolutely.
I'm Colette Hart. We've been here many times before. I've lost track. So, yeah, we're right over here. This is us right here, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is Todd and Jane, and that's Garrett and I. Our house is face that direction.
Will you just speak in there, and then I'll-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll point, sorry.
Okay.
I know, it's this virtual world.
So, yes, the two lots there are our homes. We've been there for many, many, many years, and our house is face countryside, Punky. So, and since the beginning of this whole thing, way back when gurneys, just a brief recap, when it was first built, the planning board made, it was written into the notes that there would be a certain amount of buffer, and it would be maintained over the years. And basically, what's happened over the years is that more trees have fallen, died off, grown up so that there's no vegetation. A lot of things fell down, were cleared out. This past year, they had a crew come in and took out a lot of the dead trees and brush, which could have been a fire hazard, but it's very sparse now. It really is. There's been multiple attempts to plant trees. The last batch that were planted, there've been many attempts. I'm not sure if it's going to, I'm going to say maybe four, maybe we're on attempt number five. And a lot of those trees have either died or are half-brown, and so we'll find out more in the spring, you know, what's left. But it is an issue. It's still an ongoing issue. I've sent pictures, and I've been in contact with the code enforcement officer, you know, over the past year. So he's been kind of aware of what was going on. The trees weren't getting watered. So I don't know where we're at with this, but another, obviously another concern with this is there's going to be a lot more traffic on that road. As it is now, we have a lot of headlights coming into both of our homes, to the point where you're sitting there watching TV, and you get up and go, oh, somebody's here. And it's just as bright as if they're in your driveway. So with that many more homes, with that many more vehicles, and that's going to be the main access, it's going to put more and more complications on our lives. So I don't, I'm just kind of at wits' end.
Yeah, Randy, can we get an update on this buffer? The Harts have been fighting over this buffer as long as I've been on the planning board.
Mm-hmm, and way before that.
And I'm not, it is-
Longer, yes, you know.
Yeah, but I know, like-
And Randy knows us, too.
We've been dealing with this at least for, I don't even, I've lost count how many years, so.
This is, this is six years. This goes back from before you were on planning board.
Oh, it's like way before that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, and they have tried-
This is, I'm sorry, I'm butting in. This is unacceptable.
And it is. I have major concerns about expanding a park if we can't even maintain the trees of a buffer that are required by the first build here. It's in the ordinance. It is a requirement. Yeah, and I believe the fines have been, yeah, we've tried a lot of things, so.
Yeah, over the years, yes.
And, and every single time, Colette stands up here and asks for it, and we, you know, they talk about it over and over, and we bring up the ordinance, and we go through the whole thing. Every single time, someone says, yep, we're going to maintain them, we're going to try something new, and every single time it fails. And I think before you guys come back, there really needs to be a solution on that. That, this is-
Well, one thing that, you know, even I think in good faith, you know, sometimes I think it's been done in good faith, I really do.
Yes.
But what's happening is the people that are doing it are not professionals. And they were digging up the trees from another place and bringing them over, but I think they're not landscapers, they're not arborists, they're not, I'm not even sure if I'm using the right terminology, but they're, you know, they're workers who worked hard to put the trees in, but they're just not, I think if someone who was a landscaper and actually did this, watched it, they'd probably be horrified. And then they weren't getting watered. So you can't, you know, especially when it's, you're having drought situations, and, you know, they come over with a little pail of water, or actually one time it was like a big, almost like a Gatorade thing. You'd see at a football game in the back of a truck, because I called the phone, I emailed the code enforcement officer, and I sent pictures. I said, haven't seen anybody watering. So like that day, they came right out, but it was like a big giant Gatorade thing, and they took a pail of water, and they kind of went, one pail, one pail, one pail, and left, and never came back. And so I just think, I don't know what the solution is, but it's getting worse every, every year because, like I said, the whole buffer is just, we're losing more trees, we're just, so for six months out of the year, it's like we have sticks, and we can see everything, we hear everything, we have the lights, we have, with all this more traffic, I mean, I don't know. I just-
Yeah, I mean, it's unacceptable that when, the whole point of these site plan reviews and all of that is so that neighbors can give their concerns, and their concerns can be mitigated, but if we're not following through with that, then it's just, what, what's, it's a waste. So-
Yeah. And any of you on the board, if you ever want to come out and see, and see, you're more than welcome to come out.
I mean, I've seen the pictures, too. It's just, this is becoming ridiculous. But, and we're talking about adding, you know, dozens more cars and traffic, right, I'm looking at the map-
Yeah.
Right in front of their drive, their homes, you know? It's right next to it. So something needs to be done about this.
Okay. Thank you for hearing me.
Yeah.
And hearing us.
Colette, I have a quick question. Which direction are the headlights shining onto your property from? Is it from those 10 trailers right there?
Here.
Yeah.
I'm assuming it's mostly that, but if you, now that you've got people that are going to be coming down that road, you know, it's going to be-
Because they park along their trailers here.
Yeah, because-
These lots.
Their driveways run like this.
Yeah.
Okay? But then, you know, if you've got this road coming down, then, you know, those, there's, there's going to be headlights going into, like, straight into Todd's. So, but yeah, it happens, it happens a lot. I mean, it's, it's-
Because there's no trees on these little lots. It's just-
The trees are getting very thin.
Yeah.
I mean, the space of the buffer is a decent buffer, but it's just getting so thin. And, you know, I think maybe, I'm going to take a wild guess, and I don't even know if I'd say 20% of the trees that were planted the last time. Would you say that many, Todd and Jane?
Have died.
Have died, or, I mean, have, no, have lived?
20%?
Yeah. On our end, it's worse.
No, no.
Our end, for some reason, they just, on our end, which is a little thinner, you know, the more you go there toward the west, the thinner the trees get. So, but anyway.
Matt, and then Hillary?
Addressing this issue, I haven't seen the terrain, so I'm not familiar with it. But, I mean, is a fence a possibility here? More of a permanent solution, probably save the park money in the long run as well, instead of replanting trees?
It's come up over the years. It's come up several times. Todd, we were just discussing it. So, I mean, what we, what we're concerning about, where would it be put, and would it interfere with, with, you know, like Todd plows the road. Is it going to interfere with his plowing? Because it's, you know, it's not a highway. So we're like, would that cause problems? I don't know. I mean, I guess we'd be open to discussing that. I mean, it would have to be, I don't know.
Again, I haven't seen the specifics of the specific location, but I would, you know, my idea would be along the back of the trailers, kind of right along the property line on the back of the pads there.
Yeah, that, I mean, that might, that might be a solution. But, yeah, because it would have to be high enough.
The closer it is to that road, the more light pollution you'd probably absorb as well into the fence.
Yeah, yeah, but that, that-
Randy, is that anything you guys have looked into?
I'm not sure. I have not had a lot of contact. I've been aware of the issue, but it's really the owner's concern. It's not an engineering issue, it's an owner follow-up. And I will say that it's under new ownership now. I'm not sure that the new owners are aware of the issue. Hopefully, they can follow up on it. Owners here are hearing what's going on. My first thought, as you mentioned the fence, that was my first thought, especially for where the road connection is. You know, directly opposite that road, that would make perfect sense, at least between those two trailers. Wouldn't take much fence, 30 or 40 feet to block at least that. So that would cut off the bulk of the lighting. And certainly, I think we can have a talk with the, discussion with the owners to see if, that would seem to be a better long-term fix, but who knows, maybe they can make some connections and would want to put a little bit more effort into the landscaping end of- of things as well. I know that they, I know Rick and the prior owner, I know that they tried. You know, I haven't been out there watching them. It's not my task to watch them, but obviously hasn't been successful, hopefully with a different approach. Randy? One way or the other. While you're at the mic, have you spoken to DOT about an additional like 120 trip ends going in and out of that Punky lane onto West River Road? Is that? No, we have not yet, but that will be in part of our, part of our work, yes. Yep.
Hillary.
Um, yeah, I was just gonna say, I seriously think this goes back to like 2017 or 2018. It does predate our chair even being on planning board, and I seriously think I was just at a planning board meeting for a totally different issue and remember Colette speaking about this. Super duper frustrated. It's appalling that it hasn't, hasn't been remedied and I, I'm just voicing my extraordinary hesitation to approve anything else, knowing that this hasn't been taken care of. We need to honor what, what has been committed to previously before we can move forward. If, if, if there, if there's no good faith, how, how can we know that, you know, any future concerns are gonna be addressed? I, I certainly appreciate a natural border more than a fence, because a, a natural border of trees, you know, the longevity of a tree that's healthy takes care of itself, right? Once it's established, it takes care of itself and it should be able to block the light and, and the sound really well. If you, if, I mean, if you can agree on a fence, then how, how long does that fence last? How long is it gonna be and how is it gonna be maintained? What happens if it starts to fall apart? Who, you know, is that, is that something that would be written in, that it would be taken care of, you know, indefinitely? I think it should be. We, we owe it to those people who live there. So those are the kinds of things that I would definitely be, you know, be thinking about for, for sure, but a fence at this point might be, be something reasonable, but, you know, again, I, I don't know that there is solid, but maybe that's the way to go. I like the idea of fence and trees, personally.
Me, too.
But let's, let's get it taken care of.
Um, speaking of light pollution, is this where the houses are for Mr. Green's? Is this your, where my cursor is right here? So where, it seems like we could run into a similar problem right here, Randy? You know, where the, this road is and these lots are gonna be right on his property line, right? And if this is his house and every time they pull into their driveway, you know, at one time this was very private where he had built his house, right? So we need to maybe think of a buffer as well along, along here.
Could I say something?
Yeah.
So getting back to what we were talking about as far as a fence.
You speak in the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Getting back to the, the fence, if that, would, something that would, that would happen. I understand what Randy's saying about putting, you know, putting it in a certain area to prevent the lights from coming from that road, but it's not gonna solve all the problems that we've been having, because this, we've been having this before that even existed. So it's not only the light pollution of the people pulling in, because there's, it's, there's also the noise, there's also the, now there's gonna be, you know, even more traffic. So I would want it to be more than just a little piece of a fence. I would want, you know, it to make.
Yeah, it should run along the entire road property line or something.
So.
At least, that's, I think that's what the buffer requirement is, right, Ann? I, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think it is like to West River Road, too?
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't know if it was just like from, like Todd, from our lot over, you know, to, I, I don't know, I don't remember how far, how far extended, but.
Every developer also that comes through here is, there are requirements for buffers and they all have to follow those requirements. So I'm, I'm only been on the planning board for a year, but I'm like pretty shocked, because I know that we've already sent out a letter to another developer who.
Yeah, goes all the way to West.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's supposed to go all the way along the boundary.
All the way, all the way on the boundary. Ann, do you remember, do you know what year Punky was built, roughly?
Mr. Hart was still alive then. I remember we went, the planning board went out.
In your, in your mic, Ann.
And mine was black.
We were working on design in 1993. I don't know when he first started building, it might've been 95?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's, it goes way back. We've been going through this since then, so.
All right.
But anyway.
Well, thank you, Colette.
Thank you for hearing us.
Are there any other comments from the public? Okay, so the next step, they're going to look at their plan, when Randy comes back, everybody will be notified once again before the final plan review. And that's an opportunity for us to add some conditions to approval and stuff like that as well, so. Okay, Randy, you're back up.
All right.
See if I can find the next one.
So he did bring his laptop, he was planning to share.
Do you wanna share?
Not necessarily.
Okay, I'll share it.
You're doing a good job.
I'm doing a good job, that's, yeah, sorta. Let's see if I can find it. Here it is. I only have the findings and facts, I don't have the map.
I've got the findings, the fact, the fact.
Let's see, where's the map? I'll find the map.
Can you get into the shared space? Is that where you're going? Are you going to the email messages?
Yeah, I'll try to find it. All right. Go ahead, Randy, and I'll find the.
Okay. We're back after, I don't know, it's probably been four months or so that we had our last preliminary hearing, meeting, and nothing has changed much. The one thing that we were waiting on was for the boundary survey to be completed. That finally has been completed, so we've essentially updated the plans to reflect that. There's been virtually no change in the lot lines, just a minor tweak of a foot or so here and there, just to, to line up with the exterior, the perimeter boundary that was done. So the plan has not changed much, other than clarifying, just some slight changes to bearings and distances. Minimum frontage that's required on Web Road is 100 feet, the minimum that we have is 130 feet. If you look off to the, the west side of that, you'll see we've got a 50-foot right-of-way and that's set up for future development, which we plan to pursue fairly soon. In fact, perhaps it might work out for us to bring in a plan when we come back for the prior project. So we've got overall for this 17-acre field, we're planning on about 14 or so lots. We need to do a stormwater management permit to do the next phase, so that's the reason that we're breaking it up into two, so that we can get started on the first six lots, hopefully this summer, and then we'll be working away on the permitting through DEP so that maybe by this fall, perhaps, they can be ready to work on the next phase if everything goes through as planned. Notes that we have on here, if you recall, we did the Eight Rod Road project last summer and there were a number of stipulations put in there regarding a fire cistern and other notes of that nature, so we basically carried those notes over. This site has public sewer, but it does not have public water at this point. So the sewers.
Are you doing wells? Did we make a decision on that?
Yes, yes, they'll be doing wells, unless something, at least for these first six lots, I believe there's been some discussion about KWD perhaps extending out that way, and if that happens before Phase Two, then that would be great and we could connect to that. But these first six lots, we're planning to connect to the, to private wells. Each, each home having its own well. And that all have their own, that all connect to the public sewer that's on Web Road. Randy, do you have a proposed location for the fire suppression water? Yes, yes, we do. If you look off to the right, you'll see Lot Number Six, and that little area to the south of Lot Six is where we're planning on that. Right now, we've got to do some calculations. One of our hopes is maybe we can do it as part of our stormwater treatment system, to have a wet pond there that has adequate capacity for that, and that's all something that would have to be approved by the fire marshal, fire, not the fire marshal, but the fire chief. They've indicated that they would be willing to look at that, so that's one of the things that we're going to explore. And again, before any homes can be occupied, we'll have to get that resolved as to whether or not, you know, it has a cistern or a fire pond.
Sorry, I can't find this map, sorry. I have no idea.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to connect mine.
Does anybody online need to see the map again? Or can you pull it up on your own?
I think, I think I need to be allowed to show my screen.
I don't, I, I was able to just show mine, so you might be able to.
There's a note there.
Is it not letting you?
I think, yeah, it's, uh.
Join as a panelist. Okay, I can do that now. Screen is updating.
Probably not gonna be too many more conditions.
Yeah, we have that big one there.
Okay, so that, that gives you the idea there. I think that's adequate for viewing purposes. There we go. Okay, so you've got these six lots all abutting Web Road. We do have a number of wetlands on the property and that's the reason for some of the odd configurations, generally speaking, we try to get the property lines somewhat in the wetlands so that people can build the houses away from the wetlands. Our intent is not to disturb any wetlands, a very minimal wetlands on Phase One. Again, anything we do disturb would have to be permitted through DEP.
I'm sorry, and did you say that the, your, the second expansion would be in this back part where it says land owned by?
Yes, correct. Yeah, you'll see off, off to the, my mouse is.
Between one and two.
So between one and two is the proposed.
Yes, yes, yeah, we've got a 50-foot right-of-way there. And so, so we'd have, I believe it's 14 lots that we've got proposed, included in one recreation lot toward the far south of the property.
Okay, any questions from the planning board?
Is this property still owned by LA Properties? When your last time you were here, I see. It's still. Yes, 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 this property is still owned by LA Properties. It was just strictly the mobile home parks that he sold to C-37 Capital, so he still owns this, still owns the property out on Eight Rod Road, where we're doing the other subdivision.
And he's selling these.
Yes, these will be, yeah, these will be lots that are sold, so once everything's done, he'll have no ownership of anything on site. And the intent is to build for the owners of LA Properties, Rick Breton, he also owns affordable manufactured homes of Maine, and his intent is to essentially build out these lots and sell them as a complete package already constructed with modulators.
Any questions from the public? Okay, we'll move on to findings and facts then.
Okay.
Do you want those shown on screen?
I can show it if you want and have it right up here. All right, let's.
Would you like the paper?
I've got it, thank you.
You have it? Okay. You have to stop sharing for me to share.
I do.
Sorry. All right. Okay. Number one, the development will not result in undue water pollution off-site.
True.
Number two, sufficient water available for foreseeable needs.
True.
Number three, will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the capacity of the land to hold water.
True.
Number four, the development will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion.
True.
I'm sorry, that was four. Number five, the development will provide for adequate solid waste disposal.
True.
Number six, development will not cause an unreasonable burden on the ability of the municipality to dispose of sewage.
True.
Number seven, the development will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty and aesthetics.
True.
Number eight, development is in conformance with zoning.
True.
Number nine, development, developer has adequate financial and technical capacity.
True.
And then the conditions that we have here are fire, the developer shall provide adequate water supply, developer shall provide a 20,000-gallon pond or cistern for fire protection needs, developer shall provide adequate fire lane access. If there are any gates that will be locked, a Knox box will be there. And then the sewer fee, permit fee of $250 per resident, ready-to-serve fee, $480 per residence for the ready-to-serve fee. Each service must be air-tested for leaks and curb cut permits from Public Works. Is there any further discussion? The findings and facts. Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them as written.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Matt. All right, we'll do a roll call, so, Tom?
Yes.
I am a yes. Cassie?
Yes.
Uh, Matt?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
And Bruce?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Randy.
All right, thank you, folks.
Number five, revisions to the residential D special exemption regulations, to clarify language.
Can I make a motion to take a five-minute recess?
Yeah, sure. Five-minute recess. We have, I'll share my screen. Amending the zoning law ordinance for residential D special exemptions, or special exceptions. So, the proposal is to delete not-including property also abutting and whose entrances face Park Street, and to add professional offices are allowed at 6 Pleasant Street and 18 Park Street. So... It's not 6 or 18, is it? Okay, yeah, no, you're okay. No, it's not this property. So, I guess we can open it up to discussion, or, Anne, you have something to say?
Do you want me to...
You are just biting at the button over there.
No, no, if you all don't want to talk about it, it's fine with me, but if you want me to explain it, I'll be happy to.
Sure.
Okay, so initially, I was hoping we could correct a section of ordinance that we didn't do a great job drafting in the first place. There's an exception to an exception, which makes it really confusing to try to read. So, I was hoping that we could fix that wording and add office for Where Butler at the same time, but the city solicitor offered the opinion that profession...the offices for Where Butler are not professional offices by our definition. They're actually business offices, and then we have a definition of professional office, which excludes business services. But to my mind, that definition of business service is a little bit confusing, and so I was hoping we could just consider this a professional office, but he said, "No, it's better to run this through the contract zoning process." So, what I'm hoping you'll do is still make the language easier to understand. So, this doesn't help Where Butler, but it makes the ordinance...
And this, to me, does not make the ordinance easier to understand at all. It makes it a million times more confusing.
Okay, what is the part?
And I've read the zoning ordinance quite a few times, and I have never seen in the zoning ordinance where we call out specific parcels that are exempt from the zone.
Okay, so what we did was, in the residential D-zone, professional offices are allowed. But back in the '90s, there were several planning board members who lived on Pleasant Street and in that area, and they were very concerned about the traffic. The traffic was increasing quite a bit at that time. And so, they were able to convince the city council that professional offices should not be allowed on Pleasant Street or on any of the little side streets off Pleasant Street. But at the time, there already was a veterinary office, which we didn't discuss because the veterinarian just didn't get involved in the discussion. But there was an office, it was an appraiser's office, at the corner of Pleasant and Park. And so, he specifically asked to...obviously, he wanted to have his office be permitted and not be illegal non-conforming use. So, that's why...that's the language, not-including property also abutting whose entrances face Park Street. So, there's one property that faces Park Street, but it's on Pleasant Street, and that is 18 Park Street.
And so, I'm fine with that whole history, and honestly, I think that the planning board at that time was very smart in allowing, in asking for that to be exempt, or we would see Pleasant Street looking almost exactly like Silver Street right now, where all of this housing was taken up for professional offices rather than housing, just like we're seeing on Silver Street, right? And so, I think it was very wise at the time. I still do think it's wise. My problem is adding two properties as a exception in the ordinance without any...I mean, we're essentially rezoning these properties.
No, no, they're already allowed now, it's just they're not called out, because one is exempted, which it's a property that faces Park Street. The entrance to that building is on Park Street, and that's 18 Park Street.
So, why do we need to put them in there?
Why? Because if you take that out, uh, it will not be...it will not be allowed because it's on Pleasant.
It's legal, non...it's legal non-conforming, right? Because they were grandfathered in the way they were.
Except that the office is gone now, so it's lost its non-conformity.
So, yeah, so it should be back to its original use.
So, if you don't call that out, if you don't call that out, then the owner of that property loses his ability to have an office there.
Or they have to come and have a rezoning through the planning board like everybody else.
Yeah, so my only issue with that is that I didn't...I didn't notify that property owner and say, "Oh, the planning board is considering removing your exemption here."
Well, they shouldn't have an exemption, though, to begin with, right? And we're...I mean, yeah, 6 Pleasant Street is still the veterinary office, right?
Yes.
The problem being that they built an entire new veterinary office?
Yes, so we're...
And so, that's why it would be no longer conforming?
Well, it's existing, so it would be legal non-conforming.
What was the...
So, what, by specifying that it is allowed, then you're making it legal.
The original building would be existing non-conforming. The new building would...
Would also be legal non-conforming if you don't call it out here as an exemption that where it's allowed.
But it hasn't been zoned. Right? That new building...
Yeah, it doesn't have...doesn't have to be sa...sold.
Zoned, I said.
Zoned, oh.
It's not in the correct zone.
It is a professional office, and professional offices are not allowed on Pleasant Street.
Right.
So...
Okay, any other comments?
So, the professional office is not allowed, that the new building isn't allowed?
No.
Oh, Cassie, white Cassie.
Oh, my bad.
So, the new office isn't allowed?
No.
Well, it's now legal... It is now legal non-conforming. It was allowed...the new building was allowed to be constructed because the business was legal non-con...the code enforcement officer allowed the new...
Yeah, but that doesn't make any sense to me at all, that you could build a non-conforming building in a zone that it doesn't fit in. Like, that it really doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, so the exist...the old business...
They should have had to come here, just like Jen had to come here, just like Where Butler has to come here and do a public hearing in front of everyone, and let the neighbors have a chance to address their concerns before this massive building went up on that space.
Okay, I'll just say, I'm not gonna comment on whether what the code enforcement officer did was the way it should have been, but the rationale was the existing business was legal non-conforming, and so it's an existing business in a new building.
I understand the rationale, but now we're being asked to change the ordinance to fit a building that's non-conforming when they didn't go through the same process that everybody else has to go through.
Well, you don't have to make these changes at all if you don't want to.
I know, I'm just saying, that's...
You can leave it like this.
That's my concern, because why wouldn't I just put up any building I ever wanted and then come to the planning board and say, "Oops, sorry, I didn't follow the process, but can you just add an exemption to your ordinance for my building?"
Oh, you don't need...you don't need this exemption. I just suggested putting it in here so that, say, he wants a mortgage or whatever, we don't have to discuss whether this is legal non-conforming or what the status of it is, so...
Okay, any other comments?
You know, the whole purpose, again, the whole...the main purpose of this was just to try to make this easier to understand, but I'm gonna retire soon, and so, you know, let somebody else explain what the...
Yeah, I mean it...
An exception to an exception, so...
I don't think it is easier to understand, Dan, but, okay, any other comments?
Anne, can you shed some light on why there was no site plan review of the veterinary office, because it appears to be over 2,000 square feet?
I don't...I don't think it is, because Dan...I don't know how many square feet, but Dan knows what the ordinance is for site plan review, so I'm assuming that...
Okay, because they built an entirely new building. It's a much larger building than was previously in use, and it appears to be a, well, business office, if you're...I mean, it's a business.
But, yeah, technically, it, in my opinion, it fits the definition of professional office, so...but we could take this up with the code enforcement officer.
It appears like the original intent of the residential D professional office exemption was for people who lived in the structure and then had a professional office.
Originally, yeah, originally.
Okay, so it seems like we departed pretty far from the intent in the 1990s when that was...
Yeah, no, professional offices were allowed before that. I don't honestly know when they were first allowed, but there were professional offices on Pleasant Street where the...where the professional did live in the house. There were a couple of...at least one doctor and two veterinarians at the time.
It doesn't appear that any veterinarians are living in the new red...
Not as far...
They're definitely not living in that new building.
No, no, I think he lives next door. He owns the house next door, so...so if people have issues with this, you know, I'm not emotionally invested in it, so...
Any questions from anybody else on the planning board? Okay, I'll open it up to the public.
I have two questions. One, can you define legal non-conforming?
Um, yeah, legal non-conforming means that your business or use, whatever it is, existed before the ordinance made it no longer, uh...well, it would be...
Before the zone was changed.
Before the zoning.
I gotcha, I gotcha. So, then, I guess the follow-up question is, you said you guys don't have to change this, it's not going to change anything?
Yeah, I was just trying to edit. I mean, initially, I'd hoped to edit this so that we didn't have exemptions to exemptions and fix Where Butler's problem at the same time. But now, we're gonna fix or not fix, depending on how you and the city council vote, Where Butler's issue, and we can just leave this alone.
Well, because I guess my follow-up question is, I know that there's, what, now, three... there's four houses on Park Street before you get to the little, whatever that park court thing is.
Park Place.
Yes, Park Place. So, there's four houses there, and three of them are now offices. Wouldn't it just be easier to say that professional offices are allowed on that stretch of Park Street rather than trying to exempt everybody into this?
No, well, Park Street isn't really a part of this. The one on the corner of Park and Pleasant is only under discussion because it's on Pleasant. We're not really discussing...
But it's not as...
We're not really discussing Park Street, right? It doesn't say, no...
No, but I don't...I guess I don't understand...
Okay.
Okay, the address is Park Street. I think that my viewer confused me.
I'm sorry, man.
The address is Park Street, but the driveway is on Pleasant?
No. The...the building is on Pleasant Street, and so that's why offices aren't allowed, because the city disallowed offices on Pleasant Street. But the entrance is on Park Street. If you go look at that in the light tomorrow...
Wait, what building are we...okay, so I live right across the street from...well, not right across the street, but I live right at Park and Pleasant. Which house are we talk...which building are we talking about?
The one with the flagpole?
If you're...no, if you're standing on...
Yeah, that's the one I was thinking here.
If you're standing on Pleasant Street and you're facing the public library...
Yes, okay.
It's on the right-hand side. It's next to the big yellow apartment building. It used to have an appraisal office back...Bowed it to its name, back... Uh, the doctor's office was right at the end of Park Street.
Isn't that a private residence now?
Or was it? Was that...there was a doctor's office there too?
I thought it was housing now.
Remember Dr. Buckston? Oh, I didn't know that. That was before my time, okay.
He was the one, I think...
I'm probably older. I'm older than everybody.
If Park Street comes up, if Park Street comes up and stops to Pleasant, that white house, if you went straight up Park, you would run into that house.
Yeah, that was Dr. Buckston, but that's... Yes, that was Dr. Buckston, but this is not the house we're talking about. We're talking about the one on the corner of Park and Pleasant.
And that's not a residence now?
The white one, the white building that's right there.
I don't know what color...
Because you have dentist's office, and then you have kind of a...
The big yellow apartment building, and then...
And then there is a white house that looks like it has two apartments.
It is, it's a duplex, yeah. It looks like it's two separate entrances to everything.
It's kind of gray in my mind.
Yeah, I know, I know the house we're talking about now.
It's the south corner. We're talking about the south corner? Where...
West corner, west.
Yeah, it's the...yeah, it's that south corner.
Oh, yeah, right, the south.
So, and that's not currently a private residence?
It is a private residence, but back in the '90s, there was an appraisal, real estate appraisal office in there, and the owner asked to have his property exempted. And so, that's why that confusing language is not-including property also abutting and whose...
So, why can't we just take out that confusing language?
Then you take away his exemption.
But it...people live there, it's a residence, it's an apartment.
Right, right, I'm just saying, if you...if you are a property owner and you have the ability to have an office or a residence, then you actually have...there's more value in your property, you know? Maybe the owner doesn't even know that he has the ability.
I'm sure he doesn't, and I mean, I understand that there's more value, but that's... I'm sure he doesn't, and I, I mean, I understand that there's more value, but that doesn't mean that, just because it adds value to someone's property doesn't mean that we should go against our zoning ordinances and comprehensive plan to add exemptions.
If you don't change this at all, if you leave it the way it is, he'll still have his ability to have an office there, you're not giving him a mobility, you're just writing it in different language.
I understand, but where we are giving ability is by adding professional offices are however allowed at 6 Pleasant Street and 18 Park Street.
No, 18 Park Street already has that exemption with that nasty language up above that I don't like.
I think we should take all of it, but professional offices however are allowed at 6 Pleasant Street is adding exemptions to that.
Yes, you're just making it legal instead of legal nonconform- It's not gonna go away, but you're just making it legal as opposed to legal nonconforming.
Right, but where I'm getting caught up here is that the existing veterinary office is legal nonconforming.
Yes.
The new veterinary office is new, so it should be following the zoning law.
Okay, what-
So they should have to come in here to ask for their exemption.
What, I would just say, the code enforcement officer interpreted this that it's the same business and so a new building doesn't make it need to have any kind of planning board approval.
Right, so the, like, I guess I'm confused, like, it doesn't apply, this doesn't apply to the property, it applies to the building?
No, it applies to the property.
Right, so-
It goes with the land as opposed to-
Right, so if the, if the vet's building was legal nonconforming originally and they built a new building, like, that doesn't change anything, right, does it?
That's right, that's right, it's still-
It's the property, not the building.
That's right, so it's still legal nonconforming.
Okay.
But if you just leave this alone, then we can move on to the next one and I'll just ignore the fact that-
Um, yeah, I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding correctly. Anne, you said if we don't adopt this language, nothing changes.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, and, and the owners are not impacted in any adverse way?
That's correct.
Um, I feel like you said something that if we did something, that they could be impacted in an adverse way and I wanna make sure that I understood that, can you repeat that?
Yes, I think that Samantha was suggesting that because there's no, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure she will correct me if I'm wrong, because there's no office at the Park Street property right now.
At 6, 6 Park Street?
We could just take that out and then, um-
Yeah, so what I was saying is, Anne was saying that it was too confusing because we have exemptions within the exemption by having not including the property also abutting and whose entrance faced Park Street. So I just said, well, we could always just take that out because it doesn't apply now anyways. And that, I don't think we need to, I don't think we should change it at all personally, but that's my vote.
Um, is the, is the property owner here, by the way, from 6 Pleasant Street?
No, and I didn't notify him.
None of them were notified, so.
Right, right, so, okay, so we couldn't, shouldn't anyway.
Yeah, I think if you, if, because he wasn't notified, I don't think it would be fair to eliminate the exemption that he may not even know he has, but, uh-
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't think we could anyway because he wasn't notified, so it's, I think the point moved there anyway. Okay, okay, that's great, thank you.
So I, not to belabor this, but I do just have one more, one more quick follow-up question. So you said like the abutters weren't notified. Are all of these properties grandfathered in? So it's not like anybody occupied these properties and then went ahead and violated the ordinance and are now asking for exceptions, right? These are all, all three of the properties in this thing that you're not gonna take up are currently legal nonconforming because they were grandfathered in, correct?
There's only one legal nonconforming use, which is the veterinary office. The property at the corner of Park and Pleasant, ha- pre-
Pleasant.
Pleasant, thank you.
Is already exempt.
Has the ability to have an office because that was an exemption added to an exemption back in the 90s. And that's, that's all just two properties we're talking about.
Yeah, okay, that's all, thank you.
Just so we're clear, if the veterinary office sells and it changes use, then they would have to come for zone change?
Yeah, a professional office is a special exception and the special exception, I believe, does not run with the land, so I think you're correct.
All right.
Yeah, that's-
All right, Bruce has his hand up and then I think we should move on because it's getting late.
Thank you. So the agenda item though we're dealing with is 74 Pleasant Street, correct?
No.
No, that's the next agenda item.
Yeah, no, we're dealing with the, it's number four, five, and so it's the, yeah, you're one ahead of us, Bruce. Yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with 74 Pleasant Street.
It did originally, but-
Okay, so, yeah, we're gonna move on to that as we have to deal with this part of it.
You need to vote on this, you can vote just to, um, candidate.
Do we know what criteria that Bill Lee used to determine professional office versus business office? Like, is there a legal definition that he used?
There's a, there's a definition of professional office in the zoning ordinance and in Article 3 and it says that business services are not professional offices. And so, so I was hoping that he would consider that this is, Ware Butler's office is not a business service, meaning it doesn't service some other business. But if you read at the very end of the definition of business service, it says something about business offices, which doesn't make any sense at all to me, but, so I would say that was another part of the ordinance that needs to be edited a little bit.
All right, well, maybe the committee can take that.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
I don't know. Go ahead, Bruce.
I can't.
On, the vote on this item, will it have an impact on the next item?
No.
No.
Okay.
No, no, originally, this was to have an impact on 74, is that what it is? 74 Pleasant Street, but the city solicitor said, no, you can't, you cannot allow offices there, professional offices.
Okay, thank you.
So that's why you have the next item on the agenda, which is rezoning to a contract zone.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, I motion that we not accept this change.
Okay.
To the zoning ordinance.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call, Tom.
We're saying no, I mean essentially, I mean, yes, yes, no.
Vote to disapprove. I don't know if I can explain why we're disapproving, but I have to write in there.
Because it's completely unnecessary, I don't know.
Okay, I'll just say you said it was unnecessary, is that okay?
Yeah, you can blame the whole thing on me and I am happy to tell everybody why I think it's unnecessary.
Yes to not accept, okay.
Okay, I am a yes.
I'm, I don't, I don't have an, I'm like, I'm, how do you say I don't care?
You abstain.
I abstain.
Okay, so let's see, Cassie abstains.
Okay, Hillary?
Yes.
Matt?
Abstain.
And Bruce?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so we have two, two to abstain and four to disallow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Ware Butler?
Thank goodness.
Come on.
Okay.
All right, hi there, um, good evening to the board and to fellow residents. So, my name's Alan Orcot, I'm the chief operating officer for Ware Butler Building Supply. I work with Dick Shiger, Dick is a former owner of Ware Butler and we work together as Ware Butler employees, he's on our purchasing team, helps us out with these kinda items as well. And so, I report to the owners, the owners of Ware Butler Building Supply, since about 27 months ago, Chris and Jason Broshue, grew up in Stratton, Maine, own Pleasant River Lumber, five mills in Maine. And we acquired Ware Butler Building Supply from Dick back in 2020 and we've since grown to, from 39 employees in three locations to, on the retail side, up to 340 or so employees in 15 locations. So, again, our parent company is Pleasant River Lumber, same owner as Chris and Jason, own both the retail side and the mill side. The reason we wanted to speak and give a little background tonight and then Dick's gonna help out with any questions as well. We've requested to rezone 74 Pleasant Street over to the commercial district zoning. And the reason, the reason for that and our overall intention of it is, we made the decision in 2021 that Waterville was gonna be the headquarters of our retail division and that, that's our continuing ongoing plan. And as such, going from 39 employees with three locations to 350 or so, 40 employees in 15 locations, you need a, you need sort of a different overhead structure, office personnel, accounting, human resources, supporting team to support all the different stores from the acquisitions. So Waterville is our headquarters and the existing offices that Dick utilized and still, still has the same office now and over the store on North Street fits a handful of folks. We have a total of about 35 employees in our office and administrative staff that, you know, handle all of the central functions and support functions for Ware Butler. So when the church property continued to be available on the market, we made the decision based upon the two buildings, the white administrative building that, that the pastor and the crew that ran the church used for their offices made sense, it abutted our property and then the rectory building where the pastor used to live made some sense. Obviously, a 25,000 square foot church, that can't be a church, that was built in 1928, probably doesn't make sense necessarily, but it all came together. So our, our plan going forward, by asking for this zoning change essentially is to, A, provide in the rectory with some tune-ups, that building was built in the 1880s, I believe. Needs a little bit of tune-up, but hasn't been occupied for a while, but we're gonna utilize that for some office space, some conference room space. Continue to use 72 Pleasant where the white administrative building is now that we have 15 or 16 folks there that, that use that as their, their home base. We continue to have folks up over the store as well. But we have no intentions to do any retail on the site, on this lot. In fact, if, we don't have a final decision right now about the church, but the thought right now more than likely is sort of a conscientious demolition. And essentially, we would be receptive to any ideas that might be out there, but we don't have any interest in, again, expanding any retail into that space, but we do intend to, to address the 1928, 25,000 square foot building here in the future. So, again, we're open and receptive, I'm happy to talk to anybody that would like to.
What is a conscientious demolition?
Just a respectful demolition of the, of the church, yeah, so the-
As opposed to like just bulldozing?
No, no, we, no, we would be very respectful, we would be-
I'm on the historical committee too.
Essentially, we would be, we would be looking to do it in a way that was discreet and reasonable and respectful of the, even though the church left a lot of stuff, we would, we would be receptive and respectful in doing it, wouldn't be a hurry to do. And, and in fact, in the future, if, if there ever were to be any residential there, that'd be, that'd be fine. For us, again, the main goal and the reason we purchased the property was because it abutted the store property, A, and B, it gave us an opportunity to be able to have our headquarters and have some spots for the folks that lead the way from an accounting perspective for the company. So that's, that's essentially what we're asking for, to get it rezoned to the business office use.
We, when we purchased the property-
Dick.
Uh, when we purchased the property, the main goal was the office building, which is, is a great building and it works out great. However, we've, we've owned the property less than a year and we've outgrown it and so that's why it's a great home and it's empty and it should be filled and it'd be a great spot for the expansion of the office, so.
What is the, sorry.
Bruce has his hand up, so I'm gonna call on him, Bruce?
Thank you. I just wanna say thank you for making the decision to put your headquarters in Waterville. I think it's great for our area, it's good for, you know, people that live and work here and frequent businesses, so thank you for, you know, I'm sure you had plenty of other choices you could have made and I think it's great that you're in Waterville because Ware Butler's been a great business for years. You've mentioned 15 or 16 people in the white building. How many do you expect would go in this new, you know, the rectory where it is now? How many office and people?
Our initial-
Maybe you mentioned it, but I missed it.
No, that's okay, we have a total of 35-ish administrative and support personnel that operate Ware Butler, all, all with Waterville as their home. I think it's six or eight that we have up over the store on North Street and we have the 16 or so, I believe, that are in our 72 Pleasant Street where the admin office is. The rectory, the plan is, it's a sizable building, you could probably go, but that will basically let us round out our staff, which we have about 34, but we, our initial plan is just to put, I think, six or eight there. There's a sizable opportunity for a conference room there. Again, it's an old building, it's gonna need some tune-ups and stuff, but, yeah, so that would let us have spots for both conference space, meeting space and all of our 34 or five overhead, you know, administrative employees that we have, all here in Waterville.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense and obviously with this building, the rectory, you have plenty of parking right in the, you know, church parking lot, so there wouldn't have to be really any street parking. I mean, it can be, but it, obviously, there's plenty of parking, so to me, it sounds like a great fit and I, and I do think the, yeah, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask what your plan would be for the building if we did not approve this contract zone?
The plan for the rectory building, if we couldn't use it for office or a conference room space, don't really have a Plan B. And so, wouldn't have really a reason to put money into it to shore it up. Again, it's a 140 or 50-year-old building, so I think it's pretty sound as it is, so we would be, we would have to figure out what that plan would be, so I don't know the answer to that.
You're more likely to preserve the 1800s building if you're allowed to use it as an office space?
Yeah, I think we, we would, making it functional and usable makes sense, right? We're not interested in being landlords, you know, our, our business goal is to be able to oversee our company and we're only based in Maine and, but to have our, our folks have room essentially to, to meet and do business in Waterville, to take care of the other 15 locations is, is the goal.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully that answers your question.
So I have a couple of questions for you, Alan. So, you guys have demolished, I think- So you guys have demolished, I think, three other residences abutting Ware Butler right now?
Yes.
Is there a reason why you can't build office space in any of those areas?
So the property, and you can have to help me with the address that we bought near the parking lot first, that was already demolished. We just finished the job. It was falling down and...
Well, it was falling down, but someone was living in it.
Oh, they were?
Yeah.
Really?
It abuts my house, yeah.
Okay.
It was not necessarily completely safe, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, I mean, there were people living in these places, right?
Sure. In twenty, in twenty, yeah, he's, that's right, he was still, so go ahead, Dick. You can talk about that property.
Well, actually, he approached us to buy it. You're talking twenty, twenty North Street, I believe?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, but it was a tear-down. It was, it was in, I mean, it was non-reparable, really, so. So they approached, he approached, they, he approached us to buy it, we bought it, tore it down, made a parking lot. And then the other two homes on the corner, we were gonna expand parking, and if we ever decide to expand the store, then we'd have that corner, but...
Because those are just already zoned properly, right?
Yes.
I don't think I have to tell you guys, you're in the building supply business, that we're experiencing a housing crisis, specifically in Waterville. A housing crisis in the rectory would be a wonderful place to create multifamily housing. Not that you need to be landlords, but you could sell it.
Right.
It can be subdivided, often sold. So I have a concern, you know, where we've lost two residents on the corner, and now you wanna turn that into an office space, where I think that could be used as a multifamily home as well. I also have concerns, like, you said you've only been at the other office building, you know, that seemed like a very seamless change.
Right.
It already was used as an office building, allowing you to use it as an office building, abutting, made perfect sense. It really didn't change the use of the neighborhood or any of that. But if you've already outgrown that in a year, what's to, what are you gonna do in a year when you've outgrown the other place? Are you gonna buy the house next door and wanna use that as an office space, too? Like, this is kind of my concern, this massive sprawl that's happening. If you wanna, I mean, I love that you've chosen Waterville as your headquarters, like, your wonderful neighbors in the neighborhood. I don't think anybody in the neighborhood has massive concerns about Ware Butler as neighbors and stuff, but there are zones that are more appropriate for a massive expansion, right? So...
So I'll try to address your questions, Samantha. The property, as I understood it, as I understand it, so correct me if I'm wrong, was decided by the Catholic Church to let it, to let it close, and it was some unique, the way the lot was structured and the way it was zoned was very, very unique. And the rectory building itself was unoccupied for whatever number of years, ten years, I don't know the dates exactly, but... So we bought it primarily, as you said, for the newer office building that we started with. The goal at some point would be to probably consolidate and either build on to that office potentially, or whatever. I guess what I'm getting at is, we don't have a firm plan, other than we won't do retail there, there's no plans to grow the retail footprint of the store. So whatever we do, and frankly, the size of the company and the plans that we have in the future, we're about at the right size from a headquarters standpoint, you know, and so really, it's a, it's a, it's a way to utilize the building that we purchased. And we would be receptive to both ideas for the church, ideas for that part of the property being converted to something that either would be for city use, or for something public use, or residential would be fine. And then long-term, the rectory building itself, I'm not saying we would be against that potentially being an option. For now, we need, we need a bit of space, and the building needs some TLC to be able to do that, and that's, so that's why we thought this was the best method to do that, so. But we're open to suggestions, and we would be willing to talk to people that have ideas, again, about both the church and maybe long-term, what that looks like. We respect the housing challenge you're talking about in the city, and we'd be, you know, either, either office use for us, or future residential options are fine.
Yeah, it's just a lot easier to redo an existing building, right, and turn that it, like, that's already set up for housing, than to build new housing, right, in this climate, as I'm sure you know.
Sure.
It's very, cost per square foot for building new construction is incredibly high. And as much as we can re, as much as we can reuse existing structures that we can use for housing, for people to live in, the better.
Sure.
And I think the housing committee would agree that it's a major concern. And you chair the, or you're staffing the housing committee, it's definitely something, I know, and I know that I heard it as a concern at the council meeting. So whether or not we approve your zoning, it's gonna be a problem at the council, you're gonna have to answer some questions at council, I think, about the use of housing as office spaces, specifically on Pleasant Street, where the comprehensive plan is very clear and says that there shouldn't be office space on Pleasant Street. Like, it calls it right out in the ordinance. So those are my personal concerns with it.
Can I ask if you, again, if this is not approved, and you're not able to use it as an office space, would you tear the building down, or would you turn it into residential housing?
I can't really answer you, that'd be hypothetical, but we would reassess, I guess, our options at that point. Again, we're paying to heat it now, it hasn't been lived in in quite a long time. It would need significant overhaul. The other piece, the other issue around the property, right, is whoever acquired the property, which was us, has to deal with the twenty-five thousand square foot church built in nineteen twenty-eight that can't be a church. Right now, we're heating that as well, and so we're gonna have to figure that out as a go-forward. But the rectory would be a hundred and forty-year-old building that's gonna need some stuff. So I don't know, I can't answer your question, but it's a fair question that we'll consider.
I mean, the church has office, plenty of space downstairs that you could use for office, and a big old meeting space right on the first floor.
It's not, not a feasible, it would be not a very feasible, you know, cost structure.
The cost is...
Yeah. Again, I wanna reiterate, though, on the church, we'd be very receptive to the city, to Colby, to anybody else that would have a quality idea that we could work together on, we'd be open to that for the church itself, so.
Hillary?
As opposed to tearing it down?
Well, yeah, we'd be receptive to an alternative to that, yes. Yes.
I love that you're saying that. I don't know that you have any obligation to that, but I mean, it's nice. Hey, we need a place to meet, don't we? City Council needs a place to meet, I mean, sure. You know, when you bought the property, I had no illusion that you would buy the property and become landlords. You're Ware Butler. So like, I absolutely acknowledge that we have a very serious housing crisis, and I don't want to come off as, you know, being, at all, you know, heartless about it, but I don't, I don't have any illusions that you guys are in the business of trying to fix it. I fully assumed that when you bought the property, and you said you were gonna use it primarily, you know, as a parking lot, and that you wanted the office space, I assumed you were gonna be back here looking to expand. So, I mean, let's just call a spade a spade, that's what you wanna do. I'm kind of wondering, you know, what happens if we don't approve it, what are you gonna do? And I think that's what Cassie's getting at, and maybe you know, maybe you don't know. I'm kind of wondering, so what happens if we do recommend rezoning, and I think someone says, and you outgrow that? I think it's totally reasonable for us to talk about this. This is a residential neighborhood, what happens if we rezone this? You're just looking at office space. And can you answer the question, I mean, would this just be rezoned basically just for office use? It's not that they would, they can say they have no intention of using it for retail, but could they use it for retail?
Not, not as the contract zone is written right now.
Right, right.
But you might want to, if you do wanna move ahead with this, add residential use to the contract zone, because right now, the contract zone says, the draft contract zone says, the only use is office space.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm still sort of bogged down, but they, they wanna use it for office space for their offices, they're gonna have meetings, they're gonna have conferences, they're good neighbors, this is what they wanna use it for. The church is never gonna be a church again, it has no historical value. I mean, if they wanna work with the city and come up with a really great use for it, like, again, I love that, I think it's really, really nice of them, and if someone has a great idea, and Ware Butler's willing to work with the city, cool, let's jump on that. But they're under no obligation to do that. And again, they're under no obligation to become landlords, they're a business, and they're a good business, and they've been a great business in Waterville, and we're happy to have them here. If they're gonna, you know, use this for office space, again, let's not be silly, like, we know they're gonna continue to grow, can they, can they occupy this space in a way that, you know, isn't impinging on neighbors and being disruptive to the neighborhood? I mean, that's really the question that we're trying to answer, right? Are they gonna come back and build like, a massive building? Is that what we're worried about, sort of, kind of thinking about what happened, you know, like, you know, are we gonna have a big building there? And I don't think that's what we're talking about. So I'm not sure that I'm really asking a question here, I think I'm just sort of talking out loud in sort of a stream of consciousness. But we're just looking to make a recommendation, but, you know, yeah, I'd love, I'm disappointed that houses have been torn down where people were living. But that is, in fact, what happens when a business buys a house. I mean, you know, again, that's what you guys are doing, and we know it. When someone wants to sell a house that they don't wanna take care of, and a business buys it, we know what's gonna happen. We have a housing crisis, and yeah, we need to solve it, but it's not your job to solve it.
So I wanna clarify that I don't think Ware Butler should have to be landlords, I'm not saying that they need to use that for housing. I am saying, it is also not necessarily the planning board's responsibility to rezone residential areas, so that, to accommodate a business during a housing crisis, right?
Right.
So they purchased, oh, please, hold on, let me just finish, please? So they purchased a piece of land that was zoned a specific way, we had had other people come to us about that land, and wanted it rezoned, and we told them no, because we didn't like the use, we didn't wanna change the residential neighborhood, and I just, my whole thing is, it is, just because they own it, doesn't mean the planning board has to rezone it. Tear it down.
Yeah.
I don't care, they can't use it for anything other than housing right now, so...
No, I think that's fair, that's really fair and a really valid point.
That's the point that I'm making, I'm not saying that they need to become landlords, they can parcel it off and sell it to someone who would like to. There's plenty of people investing in housing, I'm sure they know they have customers that are, so...
Yeah, that's, that's fair, that's fair. Really valid points that you're making. I think what I'm thinking about is, when we were talking about that contract zone, we had neighbors that came before us talking about it being disruptive to the neighborhood. And, and so I guess I'm not, I guess, I'm not hearing that, that we need to open up...
Well, we haven't allowed the neighbors to speak yet, right?
Right, yeah.
So let's hold on until they've had an opportunity. I am a neighbor, I can tell you.
Yeah.
I live there, like, stone's throw, hear the trucks come every morning, like, I'm right there, I promise. And I could tell you that it is concerning to me, as a neighbor, the amount of sprawl that this business is starting to take, right?
Okay, fair, yeah.
So we've allowed like, one office, and now it's gonna be two offices, and they've bought two houses on the corner, and the one behind me, and so it is alarming to me as a neighbor, but also as someone looking at the zoning, they also have two properties that are already properly zoned.
Zoned for, yeah.
That they could, they could grow into, right?
Yeah, and they're not.
Yeah, so my concern is that we're, like, looking at the zoning of this area of the city, and the amount of Contract A zoning that's happening. But also, the comprehensive plan is very clear, and says, no businesses on Pleasant Street. And we have allowed the other office building, because it was already an existing office building, which probably should have never been built, but it was, and it existed, and it was an adaptive reuse of that building. That does not mean that we are now obligated to rezone the rest of these buildings.
Right.
To be anything other than housing, because this is a residential area.
Yeah, okay, that's fair, thank you.
I'll open it up to members of the public. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I am Lori Trefeathen, and this is my husband, Dick. We live on Pleasant Street. I had absolutely, I am totally floored, because I had no idea that Ware Butler, I had made the assumption they had taken down the two houses on the corner. I had no idea that they had bought church property. I mean, we had been here, we've been here before. The lady, a young lady wanted to buy the church, she was gonna restore the church, and she was going to do event planning in the church. The neighbors in there, it's a residential area, and we kinda said no to that. In hindsight, I'd much rather gone with that, than here's somebody, take a beautiful church, talk about tearing it down. This is residential, we need to keep it that way. I mean, there are kids on the streets all the time, you're adding traffic, you have, Ware Butler has their trucks and everything else, I understand they're saying it's a warehouse, but if they've come into the church parking lot already, then they're moving trucks that way. They're just gonna move down, and how far down are you gonna let them go? Or let anybody go? This is family. Sorry, I get emotional. I mean, this is our home. I don't wanna live in a commercial area. All the construction down on Main Street has shifted traffic to run Pleasant Street. And coming out of your driveway, or walking, you have to be really, really careful, because that speed limit, the speed limit is low, but nobody pays attention to it, and you have a school down the street. You have kids on the streets. Pleasant Street is getting very, very heavy with traffic, and it's not safe to go walking or to drive out your driveway, you have to be really, really careful. Nobody stops at the parks, at Park Street. That stop sign is a rolling stop sign, it is not a solid stop. If you have, if you come down on the corner, where Ware Butler is, on that corner, again, it's a four-way stop. Half the time, those are rolling stop signs, they are not stopped. So I can just see the added traffic and everything else, it's, it's gonna be a nightmare. So, I mean, and then you have Pleasant Street Church there. We have a problem, when there is a large funeral or a large wedding, we have a large parking lot. But still, you end up with cars parking on the street, on both sides. The added traffic and everything else, I just think it will disrupt, we need to keep it as residential. Why can't you have an office in a, in a house? I think it needs to stay residential.
They do want an office in the house, right?
I'm sorry?
They're asking to put their office...
They're, they're asking to put their office in that house.
They're asking to change the zoning from residential to commercial. And I think if-
So they can have the office in the pre-existing house?
Right.
Yeah.
So I think it needs to stay. Mine is, my vote, stay residential.
So you're saying, you just said two conflicting things in my opinion. You don't want them to have an office in that house, you want it to stay residential? That's what you're asking?
I guess the question was, why cannot, why can't it stay residential and they still have an office in the building? If you start zoning, changing the zoning from a, from a residential area to a commercial area.
So we're trying to, we're, what, what they're asking is for us to do a contract zone, which means that this is a specific, special zone, specific to this building. And if they ever move out of that building, it reverts back to the original zone. So it's currently a residential zone. They're asking to change it to a contract, commercial A zone, which would allow them to have the office in the pre-existing house? Keeping a house as the office, right? Versus what you're talking about now, instead of having an event center in a gorgeous historic church, we are now talking about tearing that down.
I heard that.
Okay, so I'm also concerned about tearing down an 1880s house?
I agree.
And who knows what they'll put, they own that property. They can do whatever they want. They can bulldoze it and put up ugly things if they want.
They really can't though.
They can bulldoze the house.
They can bulldoze it down, but they can't put up anything.
No, but they don't have to do anything nice to it. They don't have to turn it into a park. They can bulldoze it and it could be a sand pit. It's their property, right? So, or we can keep a historic building, have them, they're offering to refurbish this historic building and turn it into offices. It will stay a house. If they ever decide not to have an office building there anymore, then it reverts back to a residential zone, correct?
No, not unless you put that language in there.
Right, so let's stay as a contract zone to be a professional office.
Yeah, I would recommend that you add residential use as a permitted use, if you think that's what you want to happen.
But once a, a house is converted into an office, it's, doesn't convert back to a house.
Correct.
Well, but yes. I would rather have a office in something that is a house than have a, a, what is a dwindling like resource in this city, which is a historic, historic buildings are going left and right. And we're just bulldozing them left and right. And I think that that's a trap, in my opinion, that's, that's not cool. So I love the idea of ta- keeping this refur, it's not, it's no small feat to refurbish a, a Victorian house, okay? So I like the fact that they're going to re, like, make it nice. So like, let's put the language, in the language, that if they ever vacate this building, then it reverts back to a residential zone. That, that removes any issue, right?
Just so we're clear though, putting a contract zone on it does not mean that they can't tear it down and build another office in there. It's, the zoning goes with the parcel.
All right, well, that's what we just talked about with the animal thing, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so but you are saying that you're going to refurbish the building, right? You're not planning on ta- tearing it down? Yeah, I don't care.
Our, our location is, is a condo. We have a, the wife is the president of condo association. We have nine units, nine families living. When, when you come out of Park Street and turn left, our condos set way back with a parking lot in front, 50 Pleasant Streets.
Is it the white building with the black, black shutters, is that it?
Yes, that's correct. And the situation being is, the traffic has got to the point, even at this now, that we have problem getting in and out of the driveway. It will be backed up, of course, when the screw box dies, it will be backed up all the way to the, to the end of the street. And of course, they have to stop and, you know, and let the truck, trucker get out and whatnot. But the situation being is that, uh, that, well, my wife's folks and we've lived there, how many years altogether?
Well, it's been in the family for about 25 years.
25 years. And we've seen some tremendous changes. And it's just getting me at the point, and the other situation being where our police department is in a situation that they don't have as many officers they do. They can't patrol that street like it should be patrolled. The traffic, when we go to church at night, you have to take a flashlight and walk across the street because the cars don't stop for you. There's no crossing on that whole street that we can get from one side to the other. So anybody comes out of our condo has to take a chance in walking across and almost have to flag cars down to get by.
Yeah, my kid walked to school to that, like, from, we live on, near the high school, he would walk to school to Pleasant Street. You're right, traffic is crazy.
So it's just a situation that-
I want to let Counselor Frankie speak, please. It's almost 9:30, so I want to try to keep us moving here, so, and you'll let everybody speak. So Counselor Frankie?
Thank you. Let me start off by addressing the owners, the new owners of Ware Butler. And as I expressed at the council meeting, when council voted to send this issue to the planning board, I'm available to discuss issues. And I'm very disappointed that you didn't reach out to me before coming to council and to the planning board to start down this road. I have plenty of ideas and I would love to discuss these matters with you. As far as the, the zoning, let me address the issues that Cassie and Hillary Cocke have raised. That if we don't, if you don't approve this, that there's a danger that, that the building will be torn down, losing its historic structure. I just don't see how that would help the new owners improve their image in the city. They've already expressed interest in demolishing the church, which is, I think, another unfortunate thing that has been said tonight. This is one of those things that I really think that the owners should step back and take a deep breath before they go down this road. My recommendation would be for the owners to withdraw this, their request tonight and engage in some discussions with the city and particularly with myself to see if we can't find out, figure out a way for them to address their office needs without changing the character of the neighborhood here on Pleasant Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Frankie. Anybody else from the public?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Bergeron. I own a property, abutting this property. And as some know, you know, I was the one that wanted to put an event center in that location. Hearing tonight, I already knew and I predicted before the sale went through that that church was going to be razed. And everyone said, I was being dramatic. Oh, that's not going to happen. Okay, well, here we are. So I know you said it's not feasible to put your offices in the church building, but you're going to have to put sprinkler systems in that house too. If it's offices and it's not residential, it's going to have to be a sprinkler building. There are going to be a lot of costly changes to that building. I don't know why doing that to the church wouldn't be the better option. My goal was always to save that church. And I know, because I was going to do it, I know that building is going to take a lot of money. There's nobody that's going to want a 20,000 square foot building with no parking. And you have all the parking already. So to make those offices go inside that church building and then maybe sell the house, sell the rectory and it can be housing. We were going to make it into a house, it's a beautiful home. I personally would have no issue whatsoever with offices going into the church building because you guys are a great business. I know, obviously you have a little discount on lumber, you know? So you could probably do this a lot cheaper than I was going to be able to do it. And it would be beautiful, it would still be standing. Nobody would, from the outside, see a difference. And I just think that that would be a much better use. Obviously, you can do what you want with it. You own it, you bought it. I kind of feel like this is all my fault anyway, because I called you guys saying, if I buy this church, you want to rent the office? And I was told the office couldn't be offices, but anyway. I would fully support this if you put the offices in the church building. As far as rezoning it to make the, the rectory into offices, I'm not sure I love that use. It's a beautiful home. It could easily house three or four families. And I just really feel like the offices, I would 100% support it in the church building. I don't know if they would. I'm not on that board, so, but anyway, we do appreciate you being in town. So I don't want to be against your business, but I want that church building restored, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Okay, hopefully this won't be a 20-minute tangent this time. So, you know, as part of the group that opposed the, the, the previous, you know, offer on the building and, and wholeheartedly supported Ware Butler, I have to say, I, I really want to be supportive of, you know, Ware Butler and their office needs and would honestly have no problem with the church being turned into an office. But I share a lot of the concerns of the residential being lost, especially because I think there are people who would buy a lot that just had that house on it that didn't come attached with an office building and an enormous church that isn't allowed to be a church. But that being said, you know, I think in line with what others have raised about traffic and going back to what in Across the Street, a butter said, you know, 18 months ago when we were discussing this, is that that driveway that comes out on to Pleasant, if this rezone is allowed, can a stipulation be put in place to seal off that driveway? If it's not going to be a residence, and that's what it is, it's a residential driveway, then force everyone to not, I don't want to say exacerbate, but contribute to the continuing problems on Pleasant Street by allowing people to use that. As I can just imagine someone trying to turn left in, trying to get to work out of that office, coming with pretty much at this point, any time of day traffic on Pleasant Street. And they're just going to back traffic up, you know, that intersection where the church is, trying to cross that intersection. Nobody slows down, nobody checks that crosswalk, nobody does anything. It's just, it's, it's a disaster waiting to happen at this point. It really needs to be a stop sign. Not that anybody would pay attention to it if it were a stop sign. But I just, that, that would be my biggest thing is, one, I don't, I don't like this. And I agree that there's going to be a lot of rehab of that building that could very easily financially go into rehabbing the church. And then that building, then, then it's a twofer. You save the church, you save an old historic house that can still be retained as housing. But if it's not, if that building is not going to be housing, and I agree, once it's rezoned for office use, it's never going to go back to be housing again, then shut down that driveway. That's, that's just my request. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Can I address a couple?
Yeah.
Just to address a couple of things. So I appreciate the feedback on the church, but I can say this about our company. There's no scenario that a 25,000 square foot building built in 1928 is going to be our office. So that, that's not, that's not an option. We are receptive to Anne's concept or if you wanted to advise us to go and make some adjustments to document the residential, you know, piece of the request that we're doing, if that helps. And our business, just to be clear on traffic, respectful of the Trefethans is, is, this, this is not adding anybody else, all these same people are working there now. So our existing retail business and the trucks operates from seven to five. Our office staff is eight to five, essentially. And there's no more people coming here with this change. We're just moving from, we're just putting more of them in this building versus these three buildings, so. And, and I really don't see that changing either. So our, our goal to just utilize the building that we have, that we're heating right now and put a little bit of tune-ups there so that we can u- utilize the space is just that, so.
I think what Rand's saying is that driveway there, not allowing people to come in access through-
Yeah, and I'm receptive also-
Making them come from the middle and enter the parking lot.
Right.
Only from middle.
Our employees essentially, right?
Yeah, to have your employees only enter from middle and then obviously the Gilman Street parking lot, but-
Ware Butler, we'd be receptive to, to that as well. Yeah, yeah. So.
Matt?
Did, did you have anything further to add? I was going to make a motion to send to council as requested.
I'm no, I think that's it for, for us. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? And you can also make amendments if you'd like. Any, any of us on the board?
I'd like to make an amendment that would revert the commercial contract zone back to residential if, if they sell the property. Or vacate the business office.
If, if they sell it or if they discontinue the office use?
And/or?
But if they move out of that.
If they no longer utilize that building as an office, it reverts back to residential. Maintaining the building as a historic structure.
We don't have any ordinances that require anybody to maintain the buildings as a historic structure.
Right, it doesn't have to be a historic.
I had asked the council to work on an adaptive reuse ordinance where we would come up with acceptable uses of historic buildings. I had asked council to come up with a historic demolition ordinance that would prohibit demolition of historic buildings. And we were turned down by both of those, which is incredibly unfortunate in my opinion, because I don't think that we should be making decisions about our city and the zoning in our city based off of a threat that somebody could tear down a building that we like, that we think's pretty. Like, I don't think that's appropriate.
Or has historic value? It's not just pretty, it has historical value, right?
Well, that's what the, it really was, we were told it doesn't have historic value, really. It just is. But it's unfortunate that we don't have those ordinances that protect some of these buildings. I personally don't think that we should be making decisions based out of fear. I think we need to look at the, the zoning of the neighborhoods and decide what's appropriate. But those ordinances don't exist. So there is nothing that prohibits anybody from tearing down a historic building, whether you contract zone it or don't contract zone it.
Right, so what we're, I think what we're trying to do is avoid, I mean, if they don't, they're not going to continue heating a building that they can't use as intended.
Cassie, I completely understand, I'm just saying, if they sell it, it doesn't mean that the next person can't tear it down and, and put up a regular house.
Right, that's true.
There's absolutely nothing that prohibits tearing down a historic building. So there, it's just, it doesn't, I mean, I think the motion to make it revert back to residential makes perfect sense, but it does not preserve the building. And I think we need to get away from the fact that this, whatever we're deciding today preserves the building, because it doesn't. They might in good faith want to preserve the building. It does not mean the next owner will. It does not mean they could, couldn't sell it off and somebody else could tear it down.
But I also understand that if they decide, if we, if, if they're not going to use it as an office building, they could also tear it down tomorrow and there will be no house there forever until Ware Butler doesn't own the property anymore.
And when, and when they purchased it, they also said they were going to preserve the church and donate it. And that's not happening, right? So that's another, you know, it's so- know, so they can say whatever they want. I'm just saying, whatever you contract zone does not preserve this building. So, please, stop thinking that whatever you're doing is...
But it does preserve it as a, we can contract zone it and preserve it as a, if they vacate the building, it reverts back to a residential, right?
Not unless you put that language into...
Right. That's what Tom is proposing, right?
Which is what Tom has proposed, so if there's a second, okay, thank you.
But you could also add into the permitted uses right now that a residential use is allowed. And that way, you wouldn't have to, I guess it would work the same way anyway. It reverts back to, okay.
Okay. Any discussion on Tom's motion?
Hillary has her hand up.
Hillary?
I've got my hand raised. So, I just want to be clear, just saying it out loud. So, we are, if you recommend a contract zone, it's for the property. It's not for the buildings. They can do whatever they want in terms of, they can demolish both of these buildings at any time. So, we can say that it needs to revert back to residential, but this isn't going to protect the buildings. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And they can say, if we suggest that we do a contract zone, they can say they have no intention of increasing the number of employees, but there's nothing that guarantees that they won't. Is that correct?
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that's their business, right?
Right. I'm just making sure that I understand, like, if we propose...
You're understanding correctly, yes.
Yeah, okay. And so, for the residents who expressed concern about the increased traffic that already exists, there's nothing that would, there's nothing there that's going to improve this. I mean, I think Rand said, you know, at least try to block off the entrance from Pleasant, but there's, there's nothing that would, if they increase employees, if it grows, if the business grows and this is their headquarters. I'm sorry?
Not unless somebody makes a motion to add that to the contract zone that you can't enter off of Pleasant Street.
Right, right. No, no, but that, that, that might help with some traffic, but if they increase employees, there's going to be more traffic.
But we have a motion on the floor right now that we have to vote on, so we're going to do that right now. And then, so, Tom's motion...
I'm just making sure that I understand what we're voting on. Okay.
I'm going to try, but everybody keeps interrupting me. And I'm getting, it's getting late, and I'm very hungry, and I'm tired. So, if you could stop interrupting me, that'd be awesome.
Do we add the language before we vote?
No, we have to vote on the motion that's on the floor. So, I'm going to tell you what the motion is. So, the motion that is on the floor, that Tom has created, has said, and I can't remember now who seconded it, I think it was you, Cassie, is that when, if the building is sold or the use changed, it reverts back to residential.
Residential zoning.
The residential zoning, right? Which is res B slash D because it's in two zones, which is ridiculous.
Would you like to?
Now, we have to vote on that motion. So, Tom?
Yes.
I am a yes. Cassie?
Yes.
Hillary? Hillary?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Okay. So, now, if anybody has any other motions that they'd like to add to the contract zone, this would be the time to add other motions to the contract zone.
I'd like to make an amendment. In the referral document from City Council, the hours of operation were from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and I'd like to have that as a condition. The 7:00 AM, the contract zone, for hours of operation from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Isn't that in the condition?
That's the same as the other contract zone that you guys have for the other office. Yeah.
Yeah, just copied the language.
Yeah. It gives you a good timeline. Yeah, so it's the same, it would make it the same as the other contract zone. Is there a second?
Did you make the motion?
Yes, I made the motion.
Okay, let's vote on that motion. Tom?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Cassie? Hillary?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, you just voted to amend to language that's already in there. You've got the ordinance, you've got the draft ordinance, and you've got the, here it is.
I'm just trying to go home.
Yeah, I know.
I have a council action request. I don't have the draft ordinance.
Okay, here it is. I'll just give you mine.
Yeah, now we still have you guys.
Okay, it's desire, desired design features. Is that, is that a condition, or is that just a desired?
No, no, required.
Required, okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
Hours of operation.
7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So, it's already in there. We don't need an amendment. Okay.
All right. Okay. Are there any other amendments?
Pleasant Street, yeah, all right.
I would, I would like to make an amendment for Pleasant Street. I'd say ingress, but no egress from Pleasant Street. So, they can come, traffic can come in from Pleasant Street into the parking lot. They'd have to egress onto Middle Street. It would take traffic off of Pleasant Street.
No, it wouldn't.
Well, the concern is turning in and out, people exiting onto Pleasant Street.
I think the concern that Rand was bringing is turning, if you have to make a left-hand turn off of Pleasant Street into that driveway, you're going to back up traffic through the intersection going down Pleasant Street. Am I hearing that concern correctly? That's what I thought.
Okay. I'll remove that. I withdraw that. Okay.
I'll make, I'll make the motion then. Okay, you got it? All right.
But would you say, like, right, no ingress or egress onto Pleasant Street from the office? Everything has to...
From Middle Street.
From Middle, right. Everything has to happen from Middle Street.
Just to clarify, like, for emergency access, how would we, just, just to clarify?
So, the driveway would still exist if it's for emergency access?
We would put signage, and we would change our practices. Okay.
Emergency use only.
So, anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Can, can we repeat the language?
No entering or exiting except for, in case of emergency, from Pleasant Street onto, into their property. The employees have to exit and enter from Middle Street, right?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll vote on the amendment. Tom?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Cassie?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
And Matt?
Yes.
Okay. Any further amendments? Okay. We can entertain a motion to move as amended?
I'll make the motion to move as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll vote. Tom?
Yes.
I'm a no. Cassie?
Yes.
Hillary?
No.
Matt?
Yes.
And Bruce?
Yes.
Okay. It's not because I don't love you.
Okay, so it's for?
Four to two.
Four to two.
What they hold on, can I ask? What they vote on?
We voted to, you are approved. It's going to council now, and they have to take two votes.
So, we'll revert back to residential zoning if you don't, when you cease using it for an office or you sell it, and the driveway is only to be used for emergency access?
Yeah, but if, if the, okay.
No.
We, thank you for that. And just one more quick point. We, I'm being good-facings here. Talk to Mr. Franks and whoever receptive to ideas about the church. Again, that's not a confirmed final plan. It's just, we're receptive to...
The buffers.
Buffers from the parking lot.
Yes.
From the last rezones, so.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Well, it's already a stipulation. They're going to get fined if they don't have it done by a certain time.
Right.
All right. You're aware of that, though?
Yes, yes, yeah.
You can't put a vegetated buffer in the middle of winter, so. Here we go. So, just a, just a reminder from the ground thoughts.
Yes.
I'll look for my trees.
Scheduled.
If not, I know where to find you, Dickie.
You can help me pick them out.
Okay. All right. Last but not least, Colby. Informal pre-application review for 328 space parking lot constructed off Senior Drive. I did, you know, I can find it, can't I? Like, becoming delusional.
And we'll be quick and efficient, okay? Because you're hungry and hangry at the same time, and I appreciate that.
Delusional.
It is Valentine's Day. So, yeah, but before we forget, I'm going to ask you all to try to remember to wave notification of a Butters. And you can talk about the DEP.
I will.
Please.
I can not do anything. You just say yes, and we'll be, we're going to go home.
No, that's not how it works. Sorry.
I know. I'm just waiting. I'm killing time because she brings it up.
Colby parking lot. This is it. No. Those will be a Butters.
It's good you had a good sense of humor on that. We needed it. Good timing.
All right.
Do I need to bring someone in?
I don't believe so. I don't see any hands up. They're here.
Probably sick of waiting.
Bring somebody in?
This, right?
Yeah, perfect.
All right. So, let me zoom in a little bit here. All right. Maybe not. There we go. Okay.
Okay. There's only three slides, and we'll just go through them, and I'll talk, and we'll work our way through it, okay?
Yeah, so this is off of Washington Street.
Correct. Happy Valentine's Day. Good evening, everyone. We'll be quick and efficient. We're here to talk about the Colby proposed parking lot, and Google Earth hasn't updated their photos. I saw your comment, the date on that one.
Yeah, I was just, I was concerned that there's a significant amount of increased impervious area, paved area, with the Athletic Center, the Gordon Center, numerous other buildings since this photo was taken.
Well, no, this is a newer one than the one you saw.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. I don't see the Athletic Center.
The one that you had seen originally didn't even have the Athletic Center at all, the new one.
Okay.
So, but this is just for...
Oh, which is the one that I have here.
This is just a reference as to what this, the location of this, and reference to the campus and surrounding. That's all that was, okay?
Yep.
So, could you go to the next one? See how we're moving along?
I don't know.
I don't know.
No?
What we have here on the shared drive.
I don't know what that is. I mean, I know what it is.
Those are the Butters that you notified.
This is all I have in the shared drive. I don't, I'm not sure. Can we, can we go off of the?
You have all the...
The map that we have, by any chance? This is why I don't like to share my screen in the middle of a meeting that I'm trying to run.
Truly.
It's hard to find all of the things.
He's got it.
Hillary, can you bring him in as a panelist, please, so he can share his screen?
Yep. Who is it that I'm looking to bring in? There are a couple of people there.
Is it Dale?
Dale from Colby.
Dale. Yep, yep. I see it.
Thank you much. So, while she's doing that, we've already met with the DEP. We've got approval, preapproval for what's been proposed, and I have a meeting with them on Thursday to solidify that, just for background knowledge for you.
Dale, did a Butters have to be notified for the DEP part?
Nope. I have it here in writing that we don't have to.
Okay.
So, if that eases our, a little bit. Are we good, Hillary?
Before we just, just to...
So, I sent the invite. Did you get it? It looks like you did. Okay.
While we're waiting, are there any a Butters, like, abutting that, or are we talking, like, a Butters to all of Colby's land?
The Butters would be on the opposite side of Washington Street.
Just on the other side of Washington.
They're in Oakland.
Right.
They're in Oakland. Okay, thank you. That side of Washington Street is Oakland?
Yes. So, I guess the question is, does our ordinance really care about them?
I know, I know. This is a, so Hillary, you sent me something?
Do they have zoning in Oakland either?
I did, and it said you were promoted, but it, I don't, it says you were promoted, but nothing has happened.
It doesn't show it on my thing.
Okay, I'll try it again. It said you were promoted, but I think you have to click on something to accept it. There you go.
I had to come over and talk to this gentleman.
We had to get technical assistance here.
That's right.
All right.
Anyway, you would need to vote to wave notification of a Butters.
Okay, it's just the people on the other side of the street.
So, this is the proposed parking lot. And sorry for the people that aren't here, but all access to this project is off Senior Drive, which is a Colby road, not up Washington Street. There's no curb cut. There's no access directly onto Washington Street. All traffic for construction, as well as used by students after, will be disrout. There'll be no temporary construction access or anything like that.
I'm having a hard time hearing. I'm sorry.
They can't hear you if you're not in the thing, sorry.
You can actually take your mouse and move on the screen to show it, and people can see the mouse. There you go.
So, anyway, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. So, all access will be coming on Senior Drive through the access road to the parking lot itself. There's nothing directly onto Washington Street affecting traffic that way. This lot will be basically a satellite lot. It will not be a commuter lot. And from the first Google Earth that we saw, the location of it, so far away, students are going to be leaving their vehicles there a long time, so. So, this lot has plus or minus 330 spots. And in this line here, there are double-headed lights, and on this line here are lights, as well as along the access road and the pedestrian walk. So, when the students park their car and they leave, they go up this pedestrian walk onto campus. They're not going toward Washington Street. So, we're not creating any issues that way. Also...
Can you say that one more time? I'm sorry. When they leave, they're, they're not going onto Washington?
No. Can you see that? See where my cursor is?
Yes.
That's an eight-foot-wide concrete new walk we're putting in. And as I go this way, it takes them toward senior apartments. Can you see that?
Yep.
Back toward campus. So, they're not going onto Washington Street, putting themselves at peril that way.
Okay. And so, then where, if, so they're, let's just say they're exiting the parking lot, then they go onto Senior Drive, and then how do they exit? Where do they ultimately leave?
Oh, he's talking about when they, they're walking from their cars, Hillary.
Oh, I see. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Okay, okay. I got you.
It's late, it's late. I, I'm sorry. In addition to the lights, we'll have 11 security cameras on the light poles between the walk, the walk, the access road, and the parking lot, so our security staff can be monitoring the space at all times as well due to its remoteness. We just felt that was a smart move. This line right here, this hash line, this is the limit of work line. Nothing will be disturbed outboard of that for this whole project, with the exception of this area right here. When the project is done, we're going to be adding more plant material to augment that wooded buffer, just to make that a little more robust.
I'm sorry, Dale. I missed that. Where is the buffer?
This line is the limit of work that goes around.
Right, right.
And this is going to be left as a vegetated buffer, what's there now.
Yes.
But we're going to add some more plant material to make that a little bit more robust.
Okay. So, so the people on the other side of the street are...
We will increase the screening of the park, toward the parking lot from their homes. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you think it's, will it be adequate for, because we didn't, we, we haven't invited them to the meeting. So, I'm just speaking for someone across the street. Are they going to be happy with this?
I hope so. I can't speak for them.
Dale, how many increased trips do you think that will be? I mean, obviously, it's going to be more of a, the students storing their cars there for the most part, but...
There's, say, there's 330 spots. That'll be full 85% of the time, all the time.
Yeah.
But where are they parking now?
So, I'll get to that.
Okay, thank you.
One of the drives, we'll do questions and answers as we go. One of the main drivers of this is because, right now, we are leasing a lot at Oxford Street. We are leasing space at the old Seton Hospital.
Yep.
Those leases expire at the end of the academic year. We want to get all of our student residents on campus, so they don't have to get shuttled just to get to a car.
Yep.
Carbon footprint, lack of...
Understandable.
Yep. That's the main driver for this. I mentioned we had talked to DEP already. I mentioned we had talked to DEP already. Okay, buddy, look at the next slide, it's not coming up for us.
See, it's not just me. There we go.
There is, okay. So, this, thanks for fixing that. This shows the drainage plan. So, follow my cursor, these are structures and drain lines that come across there and there, and this here is a storm tech, storage unit for storm water, although it's underneath the pavement, water goes into there, comes out of that, and goes into this comm tech structure, which is filled with a filter media, which takes out all the fines and pollutants, and then any excess water goes here to the existing ditch line. That is, this is not an exotic plan, it's just a parking lot. We've met with DEP, and they want us to do the clearing and the grubbing and all site prep while the ground's frozen for erosion control. Your next meeting is March 14th, they'd like us to get started like the end of this month, if we can. I will have DEP permission in place. Permits for DEP now take up to a year or more, but like with the pond houses, we had written permission before so we could do construction. I just received the permit three weeks ago, and we started that 14 months ago. So when, um, I think it's the guy's name from Dearago.
Randy.
Randy was saying in three months he's gonna get some, there's no way, the state of Maine is just so busy and they're so understaffed, it's just tough. So I will have written permission approval in hand, and if I could do the same from you, I'd like to start doing the clearing at the end of the month.
Yeah, so it's really just almost like a addition to the existing senior parking lots there?
It's an addition off that, we're not doing a curb cut on any state aid road or city road.
I have a concern. We, with the Hartz, they had headlights shining into their property from the Mobile Home Park, and that was a concern. I'm concerned about the abutters on the other side of Washington Street getting headlights coming in and out of Senior Drive.
I don't, I don't have a 3D for you, so.
Yeah.
Say this is Washington Street. These are the people that live on Washington Street in Oakland. This parking lot is a cut fill, so it's a fill.
Yeah.
So their headlights are actually gonna be above the first floor windows on those homes.
What's the, I guess, angle and direction of Senior Drive, because I believe that's a down slope grade to Wash-
Down to Washington Street, through senior apartments.
Yep. I don't see a slide where it shows the abutters on the opposite side of Washington Street, and I don't know if they're directly across from Senior Drive, but-
They are. Well, no, um, there's a road here, but there are, Steve Trump said, I can't play it all too well.
Can we tell from that abutter map that you had, does it show the footprints? At least it shows the lot line, so we would know. I actually have a paper copy of it.
Yeah, anyway. So Tom, they do, there are single rural houses here, and there's a road that goes right here, you have a trouble in the lawn.
Yeah, it looks like there's almost like a road that goes directly across from Senior Drive there, and then there's houses off of that road.
So the egress from Senior Drive is not gonna be pointing right in someone's front windows.
This is like a little sack down here, minus the sack, or the cul.
And I, I have a second question.
Sure.
Is the footpath from the proposed parking lot to Senior Drive, towards the senior apartments, is that ADA accessible to the rest of campus, can, is that-
This is pretty close to the 5%, but the road going up to senior apartments is just a touch over.
Okay.
But we've got- Eight spots for, uh- ADA parking here, I mean, handicap parking, which we had had by code.
Okay.
And right here, there's a blue light, emergency phone as well.
Okay.
Dale, what's the light pollution coming out of the parking lot? Cassie just brought a good point. You mentioned the lighting, so.
I've got a photometrics. Basically, it gets to zero right here. They're all downlights, LED downlights.
Yep.
They're not floods this way, they're directly down.
Okay. So the added amount of cars leaving Senior Drive is gonna be?
Like I said, these will be students-
Eighty a day, maybe, like, what do you estimate?
Oh, I think that would be high.
You think that was, on a weekend, yeah.
Thursday night, to go skiing at Sugarloaf, or going home to see the folks, Sunday night when they're coming back, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, maybe even to Thursday, it'll be a static number.
Yeah, it'll be, just trying to judge the added traffic going onto Senior Drive and exiting Wash- Washington Street.
Right.
What, what kind of disruption that might cause to the people on the other side of the street. It seems fairly minimal.
College students, they don't like to walk, and-
Oh, you're kidding.
And this, this satellite lot is a ways away, this may force them to walk on campus more instead of just driving three buildings away like they do now.
Yeah.
So it might be a good cultural thing for us. The one change we've had on the plans is these islands, we've taken those out just for snow removal and the like, and you can't get anything vegetatively to grow in those islands, because they just fry between the salt and the arid conditions, so.
The proposed lighting poles will be mounted on concrete pylons?
Con- the bases themselves are exposed about four inches, 18-foot pole.
Yep.
For these, and these, and these will be a little bit taller, because these are two-headed, but the spill on the photometric, I can show you if you wanna see it, goes to basically zero at this point.
Okay.
When they look this way, you could see it glow through the woods, but the light isn't coming at them.
Yeah.
It's all downlighting.
Yeah, I mean, any other questions?
Anything online?
Oh, I have a, hold on, there's a hand. Hillary?
Hi, I didn't hear the response for the ADA question for the ramp, I assumed it was yes, but I, I just didn't hear the answer.
The ramp, Hillary, to Senior Drive is, but the Senior Drive itself is a little over the 5% threshold, not by much, but a little bit. We're not, from the row, from Senior Drive up to senior apartments.
Okay, okay, and then-
You've been on campus, Hillary?
Oh, yeah, I have.
Have you been to senior apartments?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't been in the apartments, I've been in the-
So the driveway loops up and around?
Yeah.
So where this walkway comes out directly across-
Yeah.
Is the loop there?
Right here, where you come out, you know, it kinda loops around, this is almost a flat grade compared to this, so if they come this way, it would be pretty much right at ADA compliance.
Okay. It would pretty much be right, so if you had a student who is, is, um, in a wheelchair but has wheelchair driving capabilities in their car, like, they could use that ramp?
They, they could, but they won't be parking up here, they'll have special reception-
They'll be parking elsewhere, yeah.
The handicap parking here is gonna be mainly for students with crutches, temporary things like that, not motorized or mechanical.
Great, okay, perfect. Okay, and then why, you, you said you weren't required to notify abutters across the street, why is that?
It's from D, I got that from DEP.
Okay, and, and why are we not supposed to notify them?
Well, we have historically waved notification of abutters for Colby because the, because the campus is huge, and typically the projects are far, far away from anyone, so this is the first time that I can remember that a project has been near any abutters, but the situation here is that they're out of town, I don't, you have the abutter name, so I suppose you could, you could wave abutters except for, notification of abutters, except for the ones directly across from the Senior Drive, you, you could put that in your conditions.
I feel strongly that the abutters directly across from this should be notified.
Which would be our Oakland abutters across the street.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they need to be consulted. I mean, I, I really appreciate that the vegetation is going to be left there and that you're gonna add to it, um, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I, I still think that they need to be notified, and I, I am aware, it's up higher, I'm not familiar with the houses across the street, you're saying that the lights would be not on their first floor, but if they have a second story, are we talking about-
Not the lights, but the headlights of cars that would be parking-
Right.
This way.
Are they gonna be shining into somebody's second-story house, then, in their bedroom?
Most of those homes are all single-story homes, or just split levels, they're not multi-story.
Right.
I'm just, I'm happy to send us something to all of those folks that, letting them know this is coming, and construction which started on these dates, or something like, some language like that, happy to do that.
It's just about being a good neighbor.
Don't disagree at all.
Yeah, okay.
Do we need to make an amendment, just stipulate that the butters on Washington Street will be notified, or is that, can I?
Yes.
We have to make an amendment for that?
So, but what was the problem with notifying abutters to begin with, that-
They need to expedite-
You need to be able to expedite the DEP permitting process?
Some of the people that live on that are in Florida as we speak.
Yeah.
Some of those houses are vacant.
Well-
Two or three of them, but I, I, I'm happy to send it to their Florida address.
It doesn't mean we notify them, I guess, right?
Yeah.
It's up to them to-
Yeah.
What they do with that notification.
So for language, just so we're all on the same page, I can send something to all of them, notifying them that we've met, collectively we have, and we're in agreement to proceed, and this is what's gonna be happening, and if they have any concerns, to contact me.
Anne?
Okay, I'm sorry, just for procedure, the ordinance requires that you notify all the butters, so here we have this huge campus.
Yeah.
And so this has no effect whatsoever on the people on Mount Maricay Avenue, so I'm just asking that you vote to notify just the ones on, uh-
I would be fine.
I, I assume that's what we were doing, I should have stated that, yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Just the Oakland ones, that are right there.
Can I just, I'll just say you voted to that, everyone, I can't see those people.
I think we're all in agreement that that is fair. You don't need to notify the people on Mount Maricay Avenue.
Since they're in Oakland, not in Waterville, it's not your responsibility, it'd be my responsibility to do that.
Okay.
Is that what we're saying?
I'm saying, well, it's always the, I notify people for rezoning, you not, the developer notifies people for site plan review.
Yep. So my design team will do that. Yep, but I'll, I'll work with the language.
Okay.
Okay?
And then, so you just need some sort of approval tonight, so that you can move forward, and then come back for the final site plan review, is that my understanding of the process, Anne?
Site plan isn't gonna change.
By ordinance, they're not allowed to start the project until they have approval.
A final plan.
And so you have to-
We can waive the final pla- plan review?
We did that-
I guess I'm not understanding what we need to do.
You did that, you did that with the, the houses, the houses next to the pond, but I can't remember the language you used.
Yes, I understand that, but those houses, we weren't notifying any abutters because it didn't abut anybody's house, right? So now we're telling him that he needs to notify abutters, so I don't understand how, notify them, what exactly, if they can't come to the meeting on the 14th and voice their concerns, that's, I guess?
Well, he can't have final approval until the 14th.
Okay.
I have to put a legal notice in the paper.
Yeah.
And he's gonna notify somebody, so, um, yeah, I, I can't see just totally throwing the process out, but-
I'm not, I'm not asking or forcing you to do anything.
But he does need you to waive the prohibition against starting before, so, how much are you gonna do, exactly?
Yeah, that's why I'm, he's wrong.
So Anne, you said we can't start till the 14th is approved, but then you said we could waive that so we could start early.
Well, I'm saying, it's not really quite kosher, but we've done it before, we did it for those modular homes. I just don't remember the language we use.
I think we allowed them to, like, start earthwork or something.
That's exactly, that's all this is, is up there.
Yeah, I mean, technically, Colby can go there and cut down every tree they own if they wanted to, right?
But not once they, no, once you're in front of the planning board, you can't, you can't cut, you can't do anything.
Oh, really?
So you're gonna have to authorize-
Okay, but had they not come to the planning board, they could have started their earthwork and then come to us to construct the parking lot, right?
That's not how we operate, and you know that.
So, it's not, right, it's just not unreasonable to say that they can start clearing.
Right, um, yeah, because chances are pretty good they're gonna get approval for this anyway.
At first stage-
You can't cut down anything until DEP tells you it's okay, right?
And I'm probably gonna get that on Thursday.
Yeah, so, alright, how do we work this? So where, they're asked, the way we did it with the pond houses was we said that they could begin earthwork, I think is what it was, prior to final plan review, and then we gave the final plan review at the next meeting.
And if I started the earthwork at the end of February, early March, it's a two-week process, that would get us to the 14th, and after that, it's earthwork anyway, because this, there's no structures here.
Yes, I, yeah, I know.
Okay.
So the plan would be?
Does that make sense, Anne? I, I just wanna make sure that we're following the right-
So I'll come back on the 14th?
Yes.
Okay.
But I don't wanna-
And you'll notify the butters on Washington Street.
This week.
You tell them that you're coming to the board on the 14th, March 14th.
But I will tell them also we'll be starting-
That you have approval to-
Do site work.
Start earthwork.
Okay, perna.
And you might say why you're starting before, which is-
Absolutely, we'll qualify it, yeah.